We are now live, everyone. Thank you. Good evening. It is September 15th. We are in room 320 of the multi-service center. Today's meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and audio recorded by Jamie Wixton. Would we please stand for the pledge?
The United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we open up for our public participation, I'd like to let those in attendance know that it is our practice not to respond to statements made during public participation, but to listen. So just as long as everyone knows that, sometimes we would love to answer, but it's best practice for us just to listen during public participation. I'd also like to let the public know what our protocols are in negotiations. We have subcommittees made up of two committee members that work oftentimes with the superintendent and sometimes our district lawyer that work on different negotiation subcommittees. And so it's our practice, once negotiations begin, not to discuss negotiations from the school committee side. And so while we would like to sometimes maybe address some information or maybe misinformation that's out there, we don't. We just listen to the concerns. And then when the subcommittee hopefully agrees and will bring forward to the whole committee the contract proposal, and then we vote on it as an entire committee. So that is the practice that we've followed over the years and will continue to follow. I will add, just before I open up the public participation, that I think I can speak for the entire committee when we say that we do appreciate every member, working member of our school district. We know your jobs are hard. We know what you do is valuable. I know that firsthand. I've seen it. My children have seen it. And so I want you to know that all of us agree in the value of all the workers in our district. So that being said, I would like to open up to public participation. We have about 20 minutes scheduled in our agenda. Generally, we have three minutes per speaker. I want to give everyone a fair shot to speak. Can I just have a show of hands of who might like to address the committee tonight? Okay, so we'll stick to the three-minute time limit then as previously scheduled. So public is welcome to step forward to the microphone.
Good evening. Yes, I just, am I on? Okay. I want to acknowledge, Kevin, that you said that you don't respond, and I know that you don't. But feel free to email any answers to any questions that may arise to either myself or any member of the district, or to respond to the reporter that's here so that we can get those answers. I'm here with many teachers and paraprofessionals in our district. We have been working for going on, I think, 10 months now, almost, to try to get this contract. And the mantra has been that the town doesn't have money, and I just want to make this statement. So the school committee is offering the paras pennies while adding new, non-student-facing positions that come with over $1 million in annual salaries. That's in the past couple of years. The only new money the school committee added to the budget over the next three years for paras is $146,357. They have known the cost of providing steps from year to year as it is a contractual obligation and should have been budgeted, yet they included that number to inflate and misrepresent the amount of money going to cost-of-living increases to our already lowest-paid employees. I'm not going to take too much time. I think that needed to be said so that people can understand when they hear amounts like $346,000 that they know that that includes money already promised to these employees because they are already working. So this is money that is already promised, already should be already budgeted for because they already employ these members. So I just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost. And I thank you for your time, as always. And next person,
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Chione Nielsen. I am a paraprofessional. I also hold a graduate degree from Leslie College in Curriculum and Instruction with a minor in SED N through nine. I also hold a teaching certification, a professional license, teaching young children with or without special needs N through three. I am a graduate of Framingham State College, and I am the vice chairman of the Cape Cod Framingham State Scholarship Fund and, no, I'm sorry, Cape Cod, I'm vice chairman of the Cape Cod Framingham Club, and I am president of their scholarship fund for the past 10 years. In those 10 years, I was pleased to grant five students from Wareham a $1,000 scholarship to attend Framingham State University. Yet, here I am. I find myself working here in a profession that I love, but as you can see by all my pay stubs, I work six jobs. That's a lot. Not a complaint, just an observation. I have also served as chairwoman of the Sunshine Fund for 10 years. I have opted to resign. My husband has some surgery in the very near future, so I'm not able to continue with that, although I truthfully would. I'll be honest, I was expecting a little more positivity from you folks. I'm one of the reasons that the swimming with the folks from the YMCA went on with the children in a couple of special education rooms. I'm certified in water safety, swim coaches' safety training. I am one of the prime reasons that happened. They're shorthanded. I went in, I swam with everybody. I made sure everybody was in and out of the water. At school, I work in curriculum and instructional rooms. I provide services to kindergarten through fourth. I am outside to greet students each and every morning. I am at lunch helping children find a seat. I am after-school helping first-grade and kinder students wait for parent pickup. Follow me around for six hours. Then feel free to hop in my car, get to a swimming facility, and work. And I mean work. I do not take summers off. I had four days off this summer. Four. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the committee?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Marilyn Ramsey. I've been working as a paraprofessional for the last couple of years in Wareham, but I'm not great at public speaking. I wanted to write to you as a parent and not as somebody who works here, but I wrote things down because I'm not great. So when my son started preschool, he was completely nonverbal and awaiting what would be an autism diagnosis. I was working as a clerk at Cumberland Farms and barely making ends meet, but little did I know, I was getting paid more than the paraprofessionals that were face-to-face with my son. They were teaching him how to communicate, play, count, and learn life skills that changed all of our lives, not just my son's, even when he had no words. And all while I was at work selling cheap coffee and scratch-offs. These really weren't simple goals, and they were especially difficult for Eric, but he was met with love, compassion, and patience every day by a team that made it possible for him to achieve them. I am forever grateful for the teachers that have helped my child get to where he is today, and every single paraprofessional that made sure it was possible because I know that without them it wouldn't have been. It really does take a special person to show up every day regardless of what they're facing and advocate for, love, and teach our most vulnerable population. But they get it done, and they do it all while making less than the person who sold them the coffee that they grabbed on the way to this meeting. There's a long list of jobs that would pay them more, but the people who stay, stay for all of our kids. And they just pray that one day everyone will see what they're worth and that it's more than just a pat on the back, but a livable wage. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Sedaholm. I'm a special ed secretary at the elementary school. And I have, I'll be going into my 27th year in the school system. Over the school years I've been there, I've seen paraprofessionals that were very, there were very few of them. They were more probably parent volunteers, but the job became so intense that we had to get paraprofessionals. These paraprofessionals have gotten, have degrees, some of them associates, some of them bachelors, some are just para, paraprofessional certified. However, they have extensive on-the-job training. They may be, I would say, just doing the curriculum when the teacher is aiding other children, when a child is having behavior issues, they may be covering the teacher's position. They may be changing diapers. There is a lot, wide spectrum of the duties that they do. Everybody in the schools really think they do a terrific job. They are worked more than what they do, they are getting. And if I'm getting, as a secretary, a certain percentage, why isn't it that they should be getting the same percentage? If a superintendent is getting a, sorry, Matt, a certain percentage, why isn't the same being done for the paraprofessional, for everybody? And I just wanted to put my two cents' worth in, and I hope you take it into consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello. Michelle LaFrancois, first grade teacher over at the Deacon School. Nice to see you all.
Wareham Elementary.
Oh, yes, Wareham Elementary. Sorry. I know, I've been in every school, so it's kind of hard. But I wanted to step forward and just talk a little bit about first how sad I am that I have to be here again, that this hasn't been resolved, that we can't find some way to tighten our belts in some other fashion other than the backs of our paraprofessionals. I'm not accountant. I have absolutely no desire to be an accountant. I desired to be a teacher. And in 1992, I was hired over at the Deacon School as a part-time paraprofessional. I worked with Dory Keis, got a lot of experience, and was shortly after hired as a full-time teacher. My concern is not just what we're saying to these people that are in front of you right now, that are in the schools right now, but what we're saying to graduates, students who are coming out of colleges, who are job hunting. They're going to look at what we offer, and we're not going to get the cream of the crop. Paraprofessionals used to be almost a stepping stone to becoming a teacher. You came in, you learned the ropes, you found out how you do things, you learned a lot of valuable lessons. These ladies and gentlemen are amazing at things like discipline, crowd control, things like that, that just can't be taught in a classroom. And my concern is that pipeline of future teachers, we already have a huge teacher shortage. What's going to happen when Wareham does not up the ante for their current paraprofessionals three, four, five years down the road, when many of these paraprofessionals will be leaving us because, quite frankly, some of them are older and would like to retire someday, hopefully? I just, I'm concerned for our future, our children's future, the school district's future. We have to make sure that we're always looking for the top-quality candidates. And I don't think the message that we're sending right now is that we want those candidates. So I would ask that we look very, very closely at the line items, at the budget overall, where can we make changes, where can we spend more or less? And I absolutely think that the paras deserve more. Thanks.
Three minutes left on our public participation amount of time left on the agenda. Anyone else? This will be our last speaker this evening. Thank you.
I am not a professional speaker, and I don't like being here today at all. I've been here for 23 years at a paraprofessional job. I love my job. I've gone from speech assistant to behavior assistant, and now I'm an instructional assistant. And I also did the learning center. So I've been here a long time. I like my job. I like my people. Without the paraprofessionals, special needs students would not be integrated into the classrooms. Do you realize that?
I do.
That is such an important thing. It is also the law. We have to have them integrated. And you are going to lose people. My friends are leaving, and it's heartbreaking. And with the insurance going up, the cost of living going up, and you're giving us that small amount, it is insulting. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you all for participating tonight. We've heard what you've had to say, and we hope that negotiations go smoothly forward. Thank you. All right, we move on to agenda item number three. Good news. Anyone have any good news they would like to share?
I do.
Dr. Schwalm?
Good evening. I just wanted to say that we yesterday had a half a day to establish goals for the evaluation system, and we have an annual training for all of our staff. And this year, I started in January planning with the help of Bonnie Lasorda and a few other great minds that I work with in the district, this professional development that is a course catalog, basically giving all staff choice of what they want to pursue for the three full days of professional development. It was quite a logistic, it was logistically madness. However, the course catalog, along with a Google form for signup, all the directions and the evaluation training, all went out yesterday, and people started to sign up. And the feedback has been that they feel, at least from a few people, they feel trusted, empowered. They feel like we're hearing them, and they're very excited about the opportunity that they have to focus on their craft and to up their game a bit in education. So I just wanted to share that. It's very exciting.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dr. DeAndrea?
I just, I do want to second what Dr. Schwalm said. She, and she's the brains behind that. She's done tremendous work putting that together. I think it's a really nice way to have professional development through the school year that connects one to the other for teachers, and it continues through the whole school year. I think it's really well-done, and I'm excited to see how it goes. Some other good news is the boys soccer team won 5-0, and the girl, and the field hockey team won 2-0.
Great. Good. Anybody else? Jeff?
Just to, I think that kind of what our superintendent said, I've been attending, and I know others, members of the committee also attend, a number of the high school matches.
And you?
A number of the high school matches, and we've got some very competitive teams out there. I watched the, I don't understand field hockey, I'll be the first to admit it. I'm pleased to hear that they won because the match that I saw, they were tied, but you know, it was all Greek to me. But the soccer team has been very competitive, and the volleyball team, which didn't win a match all last year, shut out the CCONC team that I watched. So it's, it's great to see. And of course, the soccer team won, I think it was 4-2?
The girls last week.
The girls last week won 4-2. So it's, it's great to see some very competitive matches, and the kids having a lot of fun out there because they work awfully hard.
Thank you. April?
Piggybacking off the same thing, the boys had their first football game last week, too. And though it was a very close game, tied, kind of a back-and-forth game, ended up not winning in the end, but it's great to see a lot of younger, we have a lot of freshmen and sophomores coming out for teams that hadn't necessarily maybe even played on certain teams before. So it's great to see, I feel like this is the first year since COVID that it seems like kind of back to what once was. The stands are getting packed with students supporting other students. They're traveling to other locations. Ours was an away game last week, and it was great to see that some of the Wareham kids drove over the bridge to Sandwich to support each other. So I think that the level of support for each other in every sport has been, has been awesome. And it's not just other athletes supporting other athletes. It's a lot of other, you know, groups. DECA has shown up to a lot of the games, a lot of these other, like, clubs and groups, and even non-clubbed kids are showing up to support each other. And I think that that's a huge transition back to normalcy that we had all hoped would happen post-COVID.
Thank you. All right, we move on to our student representative report. Indiana?
Well, I'll piggyback off of that, too, since we're all piggybacking. I think, I'm also very, I know as a student, it's awesome to see, I think, for the past five years, I mean, our high school experience was turned upside down. And I remember, not when I was at the high school, per se, but when I was in middle school, there was such a huge, like, Wareham athleticism, huge thing. Football games, the stands, like, you'd have to stand by the fence to be able to see it. There would be nowhere to sit. There was food trucks, like, it was just crazy. And seeing, seeing the athletics in Wareham do really good, and I think we're getting a report on sports later in the meeting, too, but it's just really exciting to see that there's more of a focus, and team numbers are going up, and that's that. So I'll go into the rest of this. And it's cool that the field hockey team won, too. I'm biased, but. Open house is happening right now at Wareham High School. So parents, students are going, they go to the high school, they get a nice little orientation in the auditorium, and then they go through their child's schedule, and go through the building, and go to the classes, and there's even like a bell. The bell goes off, and they send them to the next class. So it's a pretty cool experience for parents to get to know more about it, get to know more about their students' teachers, and ask their students' teachers questions. So that's happening right now. The senior class car wash and senior sunrise happened in the past couple of weeks, and those were both super-successful. So that's good news. DECA had their first meeting of the school year today. Huge success, so that's also good. Student council, some student council updates. So again, kind of coming back from COVID, we're doing some things that we did before COVID. Haunted Hallways, if any of you remember, was a huge event at the high school. Like, amazing turnout. One of the biggest turnouts I've seen to any event in, in the time I've been here, and it was just a huge turnout. So we're doing that again October 27th. That'll be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and any kids 12 and under can come. And we'll have tables, classrooms set up that they can walk through, decorated, candy, all that. And that's put on by all the clubs at Wareham High School chipping, and set up booths, and set up tables, and set up classrooms. So that's really a whole school effort there, spearheaded by student council. So happy to see that back again. Spirit Week Homecoming Pep Rally. I'm lumping it all together because in the past, we've always done Spirit Week and Pep Rally before Thanksgiving, and Homecoming was in October, when, you know, the homecoming season is for all high schools. And most high schools do it all together as one. So this year, I know the students are really excited that we're going to be doing it all together. So Spirit Week will be October 17th through the 21st. Pep Rally will be that Friday, and then that Saturday will be Homecoming. And we'll have more news about the Homecoming theme and the days for Spirit Week at the next meeting. We'll know more about that. But Homecoming will, is October 22nd from 7:00 to 10:00 PM for anyone looking for that date. I was very, very lucky to attend a meeting today at DESI headquarters in Malden, the state student advisory council meeting, back in person after two years of virtual meetings. So first off, it was awesome being there in the building, the building where it happens. We, we got to meet different DESI staff, and we talked about different issues happening right now, tons of stuff, and really good conversations with students and DESI staff. We talked about the competency determination for MCAS and DESI's recent votes on that, and student representation, mental health resources, a ton more. Just to give you a little, little glimpse of what we did, I think the highlight of these meetings for me is, and today I felt it, and I felt it last year, too, at some of the virtual ones, is we, we talk within student groups, from students from all over the state, and different schools, tech schools, regular schools, and we talk about what we do in our schools. And whenever I talk about the things we're doing in Wareham, like, the looks on the other students' faces, and they're like, wow, like, what school is that? Where's that? Like, that's awesome. And today was about the, the career pathways that we've been looking into. And when I brought that up, they were like, that is like how education should be. That is awesome. And I mean, it happens when I talk about like RIB program, our Chapter 74 program. So that is awesome news, and it's just a really, really good feeling to have. So good meeting today. There's a football game tomorrow at home at Spillane Field against Holbrook Avon, and that's at 4:00 PM. Blue theme, if anyone's planning to go. We'll have an actual student section, hopefully. Most fall sports teams have created Instagram accounts, so if you search for them on Instagram, you can find them, keep up with what they're doing. I know girls' soccer, field hockey, volleyball, I'll have one. I'm not positive about boys' soccer or football, but definitely look for those because they're doing a really good job of posting events and stuff like that. And lastly, the school store, the Viking ship, will be opening in the next couple of weeks. I want to thank the school committee for getting some Viking merchandise from our store before we open, and we have lots of awesome plans for the year with the school store. So stay tuned for more information on that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Indiana. Any questions for Indiana? Choice?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to tell you, I found recently a box of Blue Typhoon t-shirts.
Wow.
Talk about years back, so come see me, and we'll
Yeah.
Deal for that box.
Yeah, definitely. Sounds good.
Thank you, Indiana. Nice job. All right, next up, we have report of the director of finance. of finance.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet tonight, you have several reports for July and August of this fiscal year, fiscal '23, and also the end of year report for fiscal '22. Do you have a preference of where I start with these?
I don't, just as long as you tell us which one we're looking at first.
Okay. So we'll start with, I'll start with the current year, fiscal '23. So what I gave you for the July report includes the line item budget, a summary by the, the DESI function codes that I talked about at previous meetings. So you can see it summarized a little bit. Just in review, it's administration, any administration accounts are 1,000, instruction is 2,000. So you would see curriculum supplies, teacher salaries, para salaries, things like that. Pupil services is 3,000. You would see student activities, transportation, health, anything of that nature. Operations and maintenance is 4,000, anything to do with the facilities. Benefits and fixed charges is 5,000, fixed assets is 7,000, and tuition to other districts, like out of district special education tuition is in the 9,000. So I thought it would be helpful to start off by doing just a, a brief pie chart of how our FY '23 budget is broken out. So you can see from the, from the pie chart that 68% is instruction. And you would expect to see that because that's, you know, what we do here in the public school system. The next highest is 10.5%, which is pupil services. So again, that's transportation, that's athletics, that's medical and health, that's student activities, anything of that nature. The next highest is 9.4%, which is operations and maintenance. So it's going to include custodial, maintenance, anything facilities, fields and grounds. The next highest is 7.1%, which is the tuition to other districts. And here we'd have our private school tuitions for our special education tuition and the collaborative tuitions for special ed is the, is the biggest driver of that. The next one is 3.9%, which is administration. So it's the school committee expenses, the superintendent office expenses and the business office expenses. Also in that is legal, legal expenses. After that, we have very small component, 0.9% and 0.1%, which is benefits and fixed charges and fixed assets. So that's a very small percent of what makes up this year's budget. So you also have the, like I said, the line item budget and also a summary of the budget year to date for July and August. What we have done in the business office is, in the local budget, is we've taken a lot of the expenses that we know that are going to occur throughout the year, such as any of your, our leases for copy machines, utility payments, and estimated those based on past history and encumbered them. And what that means is we've just set them aside so that we have that money waiting to pay that in the line item. So you may see some line items that look depleted. It's not that we've already spent it, it's, it's that we expect to spend it. We've similarly done that with our special education tuitions that we've gotten contracts for. So that way we know we're saving that money, reserving it for the future invoice to come. So that's, I don't, I don't know if anyone has any questions about the FY '23 budget that you'd like to have answered?
FY '23?
FY '23, yes.
Joyce?
So I don't have any questions because Chris and I already answered them for me today. But I just, I had asked earlier about the, the special, the collaborative tuitions, the out of district tuitions and some of the utility lines that looked like they had been spent. So thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome.
Mentioning it tonight, that it's because they've encumbered those expenses looking forward. Thank you.
Hello, Jeff?
Can you tell, can you tell me in general, what generates journal entries?
So a journal entry, some of the journal entries that I've seen in, in the past, usually what would generate a journal entry would be something that was charged incorrectly or you found out after the fact that it should have been charged to another account. So you want to make it right in the books. The ones here, the ones that I found here in Wareham could include some of those. But for example, every month we get the, the fuel charges from Wareham Maintenance Department. So they send us a sheet, it breaks it down by who, what vehicles have used it, what departments have used it. So that instead of paying an invoice back to the town is a journal entry that I enter based on the summary every month that gets entered into those specific accounts. So for example, on one of it, it might say that regular education transportation used this number of gallons of diesel, this number of gallons of unleaded at this price, total cost. And then we, then I enter it as a journal entry to the budget so that it, so that it expenses it out of that account. So that would be an example of the journal entry. Typically, it's things like that, that you may not have an invoice for, that you owe another town department for, you know, interdepartment. Or it might be that you found out that, you know, perhaps, you know, the, the invoice was miscoded. Maybe someone coded it for a collaborative tuition and it should have been a private tuition. And you find that out and you want to make it correct so that when you run your reports for the DESI report, it comes out correctly.
So is it fair to say that in general, the fewer the journal entries, the better?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. You want to have that entered correctly at the time of the payroll or of the invoice. So that is absolutely correct.
Yeah. I look forward to as few as possible. Minor frustration, these big accounts, just as one example, transportation is embedded in pupil services. I would love to see some subtotals. Is that possible?
I think it is. One thing that I noticed in that I've had in other districts in transportation, it would, we would have it broken out with regular day transportation, special education transportation, which I think it is here. But then also, we would have a transportation for homeless students, foster students, because that gets reported to DESI. You know, it's all based on how we report to DESI. So that's.
I understand. I'm not trying to make work.
Mm-hmm. It wouldn't, that would make my life easier actually at the end of the year. So that's something that's, we'll look forward to.
That's, that's, that's really good. But I'm, so when I want to have a sense of how transportation's doing against the budget, I don't want to have to add up columns and columns of numbers in order to find out. And that's the point I'm making. Is that possible?
I think so. I think, yes, absolutely. I think in time it is. We can take a look at transportation versus the budget. What did you budget for your out of district transportation? You know, what did you, if you, what did you say, you know, what I have done in the past is I've taken it student by student, route by route. And that's, you're predicting that almost a whole year in advance, but then once you get your invoices and you know, then you can compare where we're at. And that's something that, you know, as we go on, as I, you know, as I get into the budget more is something that I will, will likely be doing because that is a very important volatile category that you really need to watch and know, you know, where your overages are. A lot of times here, it's probably, I'm guessing right now, fuel. And also, you know, that's, we've got to take a look at that and compare things. And, and I would do that similarly for a lot of the larger, more volatile accounts, the special education tuitions. We have a, we have a spreadsheet going that's helpful in that regard right now. We're starting to do that with transportation. And also you, taking a look at utilities, we have backup spreadsheets for utilities. That's, you know, comparing what our expenses are so that we can monitor it month by month or sometimes more sooner than that.
My last question has to do, and I could wait until we're actually on that topic, but these high efficiency boilers that we're trying to buy, when I read the term high efficiency, and I'm looking at Eric at the same time, I think, oh, good, we're going to save money when this, these are installed as compared to the lower efficiency boilers that, that we have now. Is, is that a reasonable expectation? And feel free to defer, defer to Eric. And I realize that the implementation of this isn't until, I think, June of, of this next year, if all goes well. So it would show up in the following years, in years' budget. But is that a reasonable expectation for this committee that when we spend millions of dollars, we're actually going to lower operating costs?
I think that's the hope. I know Eric can probably speak more specifically on that, but I think that is the hope that as things are more efficient.
I don't want hope.
I know. Well, I'm hoping, but Eric might have some more.
I don't want hope. I want to, is that a reasonable expectation?
Would the, the high school, this is on, right? All right. So the high school, like I said, the MSBA will reimburse inside that boiler room in all those four walls. So yes, in theory, we're taking the six cascading boilers out, all low efficiency, replacing them with five high efficiency. That would bring the cost down because it's going to go and adjust by the load that's going out to the school to come back in. So it's not kind of like layman's terms, off and on. So it'll be on and then it'll adjust to what we need. With that being said, every room has its own thermostat, but it's not tied into a BMS system. So those are old and dated. They might be requesting more pull than what was really expected in that room. And I could be wrong for saying this, but the boilers, yes, high efficiency boilers, yes, they will be energy efficient and cost-saving. But when you're tying it into a system through, at a school that isn't up to date like that, it will be better than what we have, but it wouldn't be 100%.
And if you don't have this answer, I completely understand, but from a budgetary perspective, are we talking 10,000, 50,000, 100,000? What kind of savings does, all other things being equal, which is to say that people don't cra, go crazy with thermostats, et cetera, what, what kind of savings can we envision?
I, I wouldn't have that answer right off the top of my head.
Okay, okay.
I can refer to notes and speak with our OPM and see what that would look like as far as what we're projecting now.
That would be, that would be interesting to, to know the answer to that question.
But like I said, so right now you have three of the six boilers working, which is right there is a huge hazard.
That sounds very efficient because they're not, they're not costing us anything, right?
So we'll have three tied in and they'll kind of, one will be on standby, one will be on run. So you don't put so many hours on one boiler. So the theory is though, you would be saving money with these. You have a, a smarter brain, I guess you will, in the boiler room than what we have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Both. Thank you.
April?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I do just want to say, in the amount of time that I have been on the school committee thus far and the amount of business managers that I've had present our budget and our explanations, I feel less clueless with how, like how clearly you explain everything. And I know that not only as like a parent and a taxpayer and a school committee, I appreciate it because this was the part of every meeting that my eyes would glaze over and I'd be like, numbers, numbers, like yuck. And it just, it makes things make sense. So I thank you for the way that you present everything because I finally feel like I understand the budget.
That's good, that's good to know. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Right. What do you'd like to take us next?
Sure. So we'll just go to the FY '22 budget and how things ended up. In this, I have a few charts as well, just very basic charts. Instead of budget by function, I thought for the year end, it would be useful to see where did our expenditures lie. So following the same, you know, set of categories, 72% of our expenditures was in instruction. And it does seem to follow what the, what was budgeted for FY '23. And again, as we go through FY '23, we'll use that to inform hopefully FY '24 and make our best budget predictions based on, based on what we know now for a whole year in advance. So again, 9.6% was pupil services, 7.8% was operations and maintenance, 5.5% was tuition to other districts, 3%, 3.3% was benefits and fixed charges. And I know we've discussed that at previous meetings. So that's why you see that a larger amount than what has been budgeted. And also the rest of it is just small percentages, the rest of the expenditures. So I also thought it would be useful to say, okay, well, how did we do versus what we budgeted? And you can see the charts, it's, most of them are not far off the mark. We came within 99% for administration, instruction, just a little bit over for tuition to other districts. We spent a little bit more than what we thought. We spent a little bit less, 97% of the budget in operations. But in benefits and fixed charges, you can see that we spent, we spent quite a bit more. And that's something I know that we'll be continuing to address throughout this year. Some observations that I, you know, that I, that I, that I made very quickly over the past few months, closing out this budget, you know, some things I noticed right away that we're going to be watching in this budget, of course. And it's no different than other school systems, utilities, of course, the volatility in, in the prices and also, you know, experience with a school that we haven't had open in the past. So, you know, we really need to see where we're at with the elementary school. Transportation, of course, with the fuel prices. And also, I know with out of district transportation, the routes have become when we have to look to other vendors because we cannot, we don't have the capacity to do all of our routes. So we have to go to outside vendors. And some of those can be very costly, some of them 200, 300, 400 or more per group, per day. So if you multiply that over 180 days, it's quite costly. And these routes are becoming more and more expensive especially, and harder to come by as we, it's harder to come by bus drivers as well. So that's something that will be, you know, watched very closely. Again, special education, the out of district tuitions, you know, sometimes those, just in the short time that I've been here, even in the last weeks of the school year last year, we noticed that there were more students coming in. So sometimes you cannot predict that. You do your best to say, okay, here's who we have now. That's how I would always budget. Here's who we have now, who we think is going to continue in their placements. What does a placement cost? But then what you can't predict is that you're going to have students moving in from other districts perhaps that require placements or, you know, some of the students that are here in Wareham Public Schools may need to be educated outside of Wareham Public Schools. So some of that, you always have to keep a close watch on, on that. And as we go throughout the year in these presentations, I, I like to take time to discuss how each of those major components are, are, are coming along actual to budget. So as I get further into the budget, that's my plan as well. We did have some transfers last year in the tutoring lines. I think some, we had some more home tutoring. I know that the director of student services has found a tutoring company that should save us a little bit of money this year. So we'll see how that works out. And also athletics, we had some expenditures toward the end of the year in athletics that will need, that's something just in my observations that we'll need to watch throughout the, throughout the year.
Spending for athletics for tutoring.
So with some of the spring officials payments, things of that nature, we, it seems like we were using athletics receipts, athletics revolving in the local budget. So I, I don't know specifically, but perhaps not having more money in the athletics revolving account from fees and, and receipts, you know, we don't have that to rely on. And we, we expended the amount in the local budget probably around May of last year.
So you're not suggesting these were inappropriate?
No, not at all. It's just that we didn't have the budget to cover them. Exactly. And anything, just like the other ones, you know, you just did not have the budget to cover those. Yeah. So it was mostly, you know, like I said, it looked like it was officials, maybe some supplies, but a lot of it was officials. That just, you know, we just did not have the budget.
If we build a budget this year, we'll be taking that into consideration.
We'll use that, yes. I would say so, yes.
Well, is it that we're seeing the effects of no user fees? So it's been a few years now. Are we in the, maybe the third year of no user fees? So maybe that has.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, Jeff?
Just back to your expenditures by function.
Mm-hmm.
I love the fact that both of you are a fresh set of eyes. Was there any, any of those percentages that jumped out at you and you said, wow, that's smaller or bigger than I'm used to?
Well, yes, but I will qualify that. Well, yes, but I will qualify that because in my previous district, we did not have a high school. And the students went to public high schools in neighboring towns. So our tuition to other schools, the 9,000, was higher. And so, and our, probably our salaries, our instructional salaries were lower, not having that whole high school. Other than that, it seems to follow the same pattern. Your, your, your major expenditures, of course, are with instruction. And then your pupil services, like I said, transportation, that's the biggest cost in pupil services. And then, you know, some other smaller things like the nurse's office, the medical, the medical expenses, student activities, athletics, things like that. Security, that's all in the, in the pupil services. And, you know, typically, your administration is very small comparatively, and your operations and maintenance is also smaller comparatively because, in my experience, sadly, that's one of the first things to, to be cut when you need to make cuts. So, you know, so it's, it's, it's something that probably should take up more of the budget, but in reality, it sometimes doesn't.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the warrant article for the Fall Town Meeting. And I'll go let Dr. DeAndrea and Eric take the lead on this.
Thank you. Yes, Eric has put together some information for you guys that I'll allow him to go through. Just, so you'll, you'll have all the details of where we are and how we'll go forward after, after the vote.
I had a presentation for you, but.
Do they have it all?
Okay, all right. So, yeah, if you can pull it up, I guess we can go slide by slide, if you will. Do you want to mention that? Is vote one still on that, or? That vote one with the, um?
They have, um, they have this as well. And then they have your slideshow.
Okay, all right. We'll just do the slideshow. All right. Yeah. It's Wareham, Wareham Four to get into it, all lowercase. Now everyone can break into my computer. It'll be under MSBA. Sorry, two minutes.
Can you move away from the microphone for that? The password.
Let me, I'll try it for two minutes and then I'll.
Never give up.
All right. We'll hop into the MSBA project for the high school boiler replacement. You can go to the next slide. So the summary is just to go over what will be replaced and the proposed changes within our boiler room. You can go to the next slide, too. So the high school constructed in 91, currently serves 630 students. It's a two-floor building that has a square footage of 175,000. The number that you see up there, that's based on construction documents that we found in 91.
So what is the difference between the two?
I think the portable's in the back now. That might have something to do with it. They might have added on. I.
So where did the 175 come from?
I believe that the 175 is where we stand now. It was in the SOI, in the statement of interest, whoever filled that out.
That would have been the previous superintendent.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the existing boilers. So we have six Patterson Kelly, I believe, gas-fired hot water boilers. Like I said before, three of them are currently working. One is dedicated to domestic water throughout the building. The other two are for the, the heat load for the entire building. We also have three indirect heaters tied into boilers. Yep. So we have three hot water heaters as well that tied into the boilers. They range in age compared to the one that is for the kitchen only. I believe the thought was this, well, for this, is that up to code? In the kitchen, you need water to be at a certain temperature compared to classroom faucets, just to burn off bacteria and things like that, too. So you can go to the next slide. So like I said, the existing one, that's just a picture of, that's not specifically what we're going to get. We don't have a brand name. We don't want to do that in our bid. But we do have very strict specifications of what we're looking for. So the six existing boilers will be replaced with five 2400. They measure it by MBH, which in layman's terms just means highly efficient boilers. And they will have the capability for a BMS system in the future for all the rooms if we wanted to tie in that way. We'll have that system inside the boiler room, but like I said, anything on the outside, unfortunately, in this scope of work, won't.
Is, is there any reason to tie in this, what'd you call it, MVS or M?
The BMS.
The outside, external controls. Is there any reason to, to, to tie that project in with this project and do it all at once?
We could.
Maybe the better verb is could have. It's too.
Could have. So the money appropriated and the, the scope of work with the architect solely relies inside that boiler room. So there would be negotiations with, because this is the MSBA, they're not going to look through the whole entire thing. There'd be something that we'd have to do extra outside. I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. Would you even go down that avenue? Because we kind of knew that MSBA would be like, no, we don't really care about that. We only care about what's in the boiler.
Got it. Thank you.
So like I said, so five cascading style, five cascading style boilers, three will be for the 100% building load. The fourth will be standby. That just gives the other boilers a break. So you're not running one with a whole bunch of hours on it. They go back and forth. And then one, the other, the fifth will be for domestic hot water throughout the building. You can go to the next slide, too. So our existing pumps, this will help with energy savings and, and things like that, too. Our existing pumps don't have what the new style would be, which is of, they call it VFD pumps, which is variable frequency drive. It's used to adjust the flow and pressure to the actual demand. So if we know one branch down, the, the school's calling for X amount of pressure, these pumps will actually, it's not off and on, like I said before. They're not just going to keep going at one rate. They'll, they'll fluctuate with what the boilers are calling for and what the school's calling for. So you can go to the next slide, too. The next slide after this is a little more blown up, but this is just what the, the, the schematics look like for the boiler room itself. So the items to be replaced are the air separator. We have a chemical shop feeder, expansion tanks, all the piping valves and accessory for a new boiler system. You can go to the next slide, too. So the five rectangles in the middle, those are our boilers. So if that helps of what you're looking at, it might look like a bunch of gibberish. So the five boilers right there, the, where it says WH, those are our hot water tanks. Those would be three to replace the one that's to the left, all standalone by itself. That is the one that feeds into the kitchen itself. Expansion tanks and, and the pumps. So all, everything there, that is to be replaced. So now, go ahead.
So right now, we have that one in the top left-hand corner, right? And you're replacing it with three things, each one of them is probably three times as big or more.
Yep.
Where are we finding the space? What is in the current?
Those, that is current. So the, so where those five are.
No, 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 not the five, the three.
The hot water tank. We have three hot water tanks. We're just replacing them.
I, I thought the one on the left was the only one we had.
No, no. So currently, we have four.
Got it. Thank you. All set.
Yeah, no worries. So now we'll go over the, um, the cost estimate that was sent to the MSBA. This one's pretty straightforward, more than the roof. So the next slide, you'll see that that's our reimbursement rate at the 71.58%. It's a great rate to have. The next slide. This is what I was, this was given to me by the, our OPM, which they called the 3011 budget sheet. So it breaks down everything, schematic design, all the contingencies, the things of that nature. The most important part is towards the end, the total project budget is 2.462 million, I believe. And then in the red on the right, that is what the town would have to pay out of pocket. Like Jeff has said in previous meetings, this isn't, we get reimbursed right off the bat. We, the, the town would have to come up with 2.4 million. Then we'd be reimbursed, I believe it's 1.7 million. So the town will, for a $2 million project, the town would only have to pay $773,000. You can go to the next slide, too. This helps break it down a little bit, too, easier to visual.
I just have a quick question. So, for example, when we worked through the MSBA for building the new school, we came in under budget on that, correct? So essentially, is there a possibility that this project, obviously it's an estimate, that it could come in under that and what the town people would have to pay would be less than 773,000?
Correct. So it goes out to bid. If that bid's less than 2.4, then we'll get reimbursed at 71.58% on that, that bid that came in. So, yeah.
Make sure that the, the townspeople know that we saved so much on the, the school, elementary school. So what they expected to pay was less, that there's still a possibility coming into town meeting that, you know, they, it would be less than what they may.
So I think this is kind of a worst case. I, I hope that's how they budget this. So we're not going over. But yeah, that is a possibility. When we go out to bid, that prices of materials go down, don't go up, hopefully. And someone just wants the bid, so they bid a little lower. We, it, all those are variables to, to change that price. So like I said, this is just a visual representation of what that percent actually looks like, the reimbursement. You can go to the next slide, too. So this was also sent to me by the OPM in their submission. This is the monthly cash flow. So you can see, the, the idea is to, if everything goes according to plan, we would start next summer, summer of 2023, to really get all the demo work and, and to get going on this project. So you'll see invoices in August and September, because it'll probably start working in June, July, and then really pick up. You can go to the next slide. Next slide's the same thing, Q rule of cash flow. Just breaks it down, I guess, to look at, look at it a different way. But you can go to the next slide, too. So this one's important as well. So this is the, the timeline. If everything, if we're on track, then this, we should be able to close out in September, I believe, September of next year. We do have town, we have the MSBA to approve and give us their, their marks back and all that fun stuff. You've guys dealt with the MSBA before, so I'm sure you know how that process works. This is my first time, so I'm sure I'll be learning a lot. But I do know that, that their approval was very close to our, our town, our town meeting. But if those go according to plan, then everything else should be, we should be that much closer to getting this done over the summer. This, this project doesn't seem like it might fall into the school year. The roof might, but this one doesn't, it doesn't see, show signs that we will. But even if it does, there, it's, it's separate enough away from the students that we can still get work done. You can go to the next slide. Yep. So, what was it? Yeah, you can wait right here. So if you have any questions?
So, may I, may I? So, so the plan, the plan would be that in your packet, you should have the article and the motion that would need to be read in order to vote to approve this warrant article, that we would submit to the town. As Eric pointed out, the project has been submitted to MSBA. We anticipate it will be approved by MSBA. We will learn that prior to town meeting. Once it is approved, this would go to town meeting for, as, as Eric said, the 2.462 million dollar project that we would be, the town would be reimbursed 70-plus percent. The, with the intent of completing the work over the summer. This right now looks like it's right on track to be a, a project that will be completed and save the, the town a considerable amount of money. And the school, of course, would get all new boilers and water tanks. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to vote each of the articles.
I would like to vote each one. So we go to this one first. But are there any questions about the, the warrant and article language right now by anybody on the committee, or anything else about the boilers? Yeah?
So what happens if, what happens if the town, say, doesn't approve this? What would happen then?
So we will most certainly have to go out to bid ourselves, the schools, meaning it, those boilers need to be replaced. They've been there since 91. Like I said, we have three currently working, and they're on their, their last limb. They all have reached their life expectancy. The fact that they made it this far is astonishing, you know? This, this needs to happen. And this is a great opportunity to save a lot of money to do the same. So to answer your question, we would have to do it ourselves. And if it was 2.4 million or a little less, we would be paying 100%, no reimbursement. So.
Good question, Indiana. Thank you. Anyone else? Joyce?
I don't have a question. I just want to be clear that we're voting to submit this article, the first section, to town meeting. There's some other language in here about funding. That's up to town meeting. Right? So we're only voting to submit this, the article portion.
That, that is correct. The, the bottom part is just the motion that needs to be read as for you guys to, to vote. The MSBA, MSBA requires that we read this exact language.
The whole thing?
The whole thing.
Article, motion, vote, order, and ballot question?
No, no, just the motion, vote, order, just the motion, that middle, middle paragraph.
So I thought that was the motion for town meeting. I believe we're only voting to submit the article. The, that would be the warrant article to town meeting. The motion, that would be the language used at town meeting.
Okay.
So we're just voting on the article?
To submit the article for consideration.
To submit the article for the warrant.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's up to us to put it on the town warrant as an article or warrant. Is that what that language is for?
It's up to us to request that the selectmen put it on town meeting.
So we would read the article in its entirety. That's the language that we want to submit going forward. Mr. Chair? Yes, Jeff? I believe you're 100, both of you are 100% correct. We really don't have control of the motion. But we can say that it has to be consistent with what MSBA requires, or else it, it's, it doesn't have any impact. But we're, we're voting to put that article on town meeting floor. And then the powers that be, finance committee, town administrator, et cetera, not us, hopefully will turn it into a motion that is applicable to the article. Okay. So in which case, Jeff, since you've done this in the past, I would ask if you would read the article language that we can then vote on? Sure. Thank you. The article reads, "To see if the town of Wareham," parentheses, "the town," "will vote to appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee for the Boiler Replacement Project at Wareham High School." Comma, "Seven Viking Drive, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town has applied for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority." and for which the town has applied for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA's board of directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project costs the town incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town."
Thank you. So do I have a motion to?
That was the motion, so now I need a second.
You move that, okay, I guess?
Yes.
All right. We have it seconded. Any discussion?
I do have one question, sorry. It says, "Under the direction of the School Building Committee."
Yeah, I had the same reaction.
So in this case, is, who makes up that School Building Committee?
I am unaware of that. We'll have to refer back to.
Yeah, there, there is, there is no School Building Committee for this, for this work.
Are we sure Scott hasn't created one on his own? I mean, it is his project, because I had exactly the same question as I was reading this.
This was drafted by the OPM and handed to us, so I'm assuming.
And they're following, obviously, the guidelines of MSBA, so. So we will ask that question.
But, but I think the superintendent needs to find out if there is one, and if there isn't one, one needs to be created.
I nominate Jeff.
I, I can't, I can't imagine that you have to have a committee to, to, but I will, I will look into that.
I mean, couldn't the committee be, the OPM and the architect?
I think the real issue is, what is the size of the committee and who has to be on it? Because unlike the elementary school, where literally they dictated, you know, who had to be on this committee, this could be a very small committee, hopefully, which won't be a problem. But I do think it's important that if we're going to have a motion that refers to it, it does need to exist. Before town meeting.
Jamie?
She voted on the SOI at the time the former superintendent stated that she would, she would be forming a committee. I don't think that ever happened, so I think that something that needs to happen now is moving forward.
Yeah, and the key thing, Eric, is find out who needs to be on the committee.
Okay. Oh, oh, I know.
By who, I don't mean the, the name of the person.
Yeah, the role.
The skill set.
Yeah, exactly.
Role, et cetera.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this article to be placed on the warrant? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Five-zero-zero, thank you.
Let's move right along. So this is the presentation for the roof replacement at the middle school. Same thing, just gonna go over a brief summary and then the cost estimate. Same platform as the high school that you just saw, too. So you can go to the next slide if you can, thank you. Middle school built in nineteen fifty's, I believe fifty-six is what we've, we've found in the roof. The full scope of work is to replace ninety-two thousand square feet of the existing roof. You can go to the next slide, too, thank you. So, um, I'm sure you've seen this in your packet, let me just explain this. The, the colors do not represent the age of the roof, they represent the age of the building. When I first looked at this, I was very confused, I thought they were giving us.
Good point.
A bone saying that our section F would be reimbursable. It, it's not, that's just when the building was actually built. I'll be highlighting this a lot, so we're all clear, that section A, which was the renovation and construction of that E-wing section that we know it as, that was in two thousand and four. What we've learned before, well, after the SOI was submitted to the MSBA, is that section F and many other sections were replaced during this construction as well. I don't think we knew that when the, OSI, um, just the SOI was, was put in there. You can go to the next slide. So this, go ahead.
Before you leave that slide.
Oh, it's in there a bunch, don't worry.
What?
It's in there a bunch in this presentation, so.
Can you tell us in general which slides, which areas meet the MSBA criteria for old enough to be replaced under this proposal?
It's further in the presentation. So this is just samples of, pictures of what they actually did. They cut all the way down to the structured roof, just to determine the ages. I think they did fifty test cuts all, all over the roof. You can go to the next slide, thank you. I will note that CGKV, our, our architect, did put into the MSBA that, and I quote this, "All areas of the existing roof are in very poor condition, especially the areas that were installed during the two thousand and four project." So I don't know what happened in that two thousand and four project, but it's not holding up. If we wanted to wait for the whole roof to be reimbursed, we would have to wait until two thousand and thirty-three, two thousand and thirty-four to meet that twenty-nine-year threshold by the MSBA.
I would bet Tracy would be long gone.
Yep. Not worrying about that roof at all.
I meant out of protest.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And who knows by then if the MSBA threshold changes even further, to move it to thirty-one years, then thirty-five, so on and so forth. Did you go, the, go back, yep, sorry. So with this project, if there's any equipment that they plan on lifting that might not make it back down in one piece, as far as being really old, that is also part of the MSBA to be changed in kind and replaced. So we have a make-up air unit that can, that serves our kitchen area, I believe, either the kitchen or the cafeteria area. The fear is that this is potentially a hazard currently, so through this project, that, that would be replaced in kind. The fear is that with big things like this, they need to lift it up and actually lift it up with a crane, pull all the flashing in, and put it back down. The idea is that that might not make it down in one piece, or it, it's just, it, it needs to go, it's, it's old. You can go to the next slide. Same thing, so now we're gonna go into the cost estimate. This will have the breakdown of what's reimbursed and what's not. This is, again, the reimbursement rate, it's the same as the high school, seventy-one point five eight percent. This is, again, the roof, and showing the, the building age, not the, the roof age, so you can go to the next slide, too. This are the sections that will be reimbursed through the MSBA at the seventy, just shy of seventy-two percent. So M through O, U and V. These are the sections that will not, after determining that these, all the test cuts there, that this roof does not qualify for being older than twenty-nine years old.
Jeff?
I will note that.
I just, I just note that it's very weird, the small, like, corner in the.
The unknown, oh, over there?
Yeah, like.
If you, if you're on the roof, it's, 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 it's not connected, it's, it's a walkway in between. It is weird, but that's what they found, that these roofs are not eligible, they're not twenty-nine years old. It is a walkway through, maybe that's why. They replaced them, it could have been in really poor condition at that time. I, I can't speak on what, what they found.
Jeff?
Does the superintendent have an update on this issue?
Which part of the issue?
Well, the, the most expensive part, which is what, what is eligible for the seventy-one percent plus reimbursement?
It's, no, I don't.
Okay, 'cause I thought at some point when we spoke on Monday, you thought you might have an update for us on the MSBA's position on, on.
Oh, oh, I don't have a, I don't have an update, no.
Okay, so they haven't said yes or no, it's just, okay, thank you.
Yep. So same thing, this is the, um, the, um, OPM gave us the, the thirty-eleven breakdown of schematic design, construction documents, cost estimates, contingencies. So the main two numbers here to look at are the total project budget, just shy of eight point four million dollars. And with only certain sections of the roof being eligible for reimbursement, the town would then have to pay just shy of five point four million dollars. So what we're asking the school committee is just to, like, the first one, to vote this onto the town warrant. This is a representation of what that actually looks like. You can go to the next slide, I don't think anyone wants to see that. Same thing, monthly cash flow, so if we, everything goes according to plan, we'd, we're still shooting for, um, over the summer project. Like I said, this one might pull into when school starts, but it won't be that main demo work. All the real heavy, heavy-duty work, I should say, would be in the summer. You might see roofers there just nailing and flashing in September, in October, things like that. Not making such a ruckus as they would if the kids were in school all summer long. You can go to the next slide, too. Same thing, just another representation of what the bills would look like when they come in, as far as the invoices, and the timeline. So if all goes according to plan, we'd be then closing out in September of next year as well. Granted, that lead times stay where they are right now, but the, this is set up just to give us buffers for those as well. And that is it for the roof as well. So I would then ask you, the school committee, to vote the motion to add this to the town warrant.
Before we do that, I'm sure there might be some questions?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, so if I may.
Yes.
So I have spoken to the town about this, because it's a big number. And even, you know, the anticipated reimbursement, the five point four million is, is a, a big number for the town to swallow. What we would like to do is perhaps, I think first, I think we should vote this article to, to submit it to the town. And in the, in the interim, ha, I'd like to have a meeting with the, with the town, myself, the town administrator, maybe the budget subcommittee from the school committee, and some FinCom, and select board members, and look at this number and the reimbursement and the options that we may have to lower that number a little bit. It's, it's, it is a big number, but it is also an opportunity to get the roof replaced. It does need to get done, especially the A-wing. And so it, you know, we're on this really tight timeline where town meeting is coming up at the end of October. We have to get this warrant article in if we wanna even have it considered. We can always lower that number if we wanted to. We also could al, um, always withdraw the warrant article if we had to. But I think with the timeline we're working with, it would be smart to vote it, submit it, have that group meeting and look at our options. And we also have to wait to see what MSBA says when they, when they, whether or not they approve the project, which I think they will. But we'll have a final number on the reimbursement at that time also.
Is there any possibility that they would approve more than?
So we.
Roof areas we've talked about tonight?
So we, the idea was to send it to the MSBA as, "We didn't find anything, let's let you pick up and see what you find." So we have talked to the OPM about that, and it's very rare.
I was told that it's possible, but, but not likely. So.
So then we'd be voting this, kind of in a sense, almost as a placeholder to get it in, into the, into the system, and then we can readjust in the next couple of weeks going forward?
Correct, if, if necessary, we can, we can adjust that. But I think not submitting anything would be a mistake.
Any other questions? April?
So, as, the, the language in this is very similar to the other one. I'm assuming that that would mean that a separate committee, School Building Committee, for this project, as it's a different building, would probably need to be put together by the superintendent as well?
Correct. Yeah, I will, I will look into that tomorrow to find out exactly what the expectation is by MSBA for that committee.
Before you make a motion with this article, I'm just having a, a couple of second thoughts about what I said before. I just want to make sure that we think that we're covered, because this language under the motion, vote, order, that is very specific. We want to make sure that that is included as part of the article, right? So.
That what exactly is included as?
Well, so we voted, we read the article portion, right? Because, so I'm just having second thoughts about what I said, because I want to make sure that we're specific, that this is the language that we want in the warrant. Jeff, what are your thoughts? Can you ask Jeff what his thoughts are?
Jeff, go ahead.
So. A, we don't have any choice about the language. B, the eight point three-nine-five million is going to be there regardless of what they choose to reimburse. And it will involve short-term borrowing, whether, whether the reimbursement is for the whole project or just a relatively small portion of it. What I don't want is for the school committee or anybody else involved in this project, including the finance committee or the town administrator, the treasurer, et cetera, to, for us to be accused of being somewhat disingenuous. Because even though the language is the same, regardless of how much we're being reimbursed, there's nothing in the article and nothing in the motion that says that. So, because the amount of short-term borrowing is the same regardless, it's just a question of whether we get the money back from the MSBA. And that's my biggest concern. At what point are the taxpayers going to be told that this is actually going to cost them five million dollars plus? It's not clear. Now, if the finance committee, if the finance committee, within their purview, decides to elaborate on what this all means with their explanation, which, which is below the article, okay? That's, that's where it should be, but not everybody reads it.
I would expect one of us would get up and clarify that for town meeting. That what, what, what this all means. I, I, I've never been to Wareham Town Meeting, the town meetings I've been to. I've been to town meetings, believe, I know how fun they are, but, uh, right. I mean, it would have to be clarified. We want, we want the voters to know that, that especially, you know, with, with the boilers, that this, this is a great deal, that, that it's saving a tremendous amount of money for them and that they're gonna be reimbursed.
Right. But the prob, the problem is that it's, if the town cannot fund it with short-term borrowing, okay? Because, for a, any number of reasons, then this would have to become part of a debt exclusion. And that's a whole nother process, which thankfully, the town has shown some recent history of being able to swallow that and approve it. And of course, the school building, the new elementary school, cost far less than the town was told it would. So we've saved money to do something that is essential to the integrity of the middle school. But I, I, I think there needs to be a very transparent plan for town meetings so that the taxpayers don't suddenly realize. But more important than that, we're probably gonna have the town administrator saying, "We don't know where this money is coming from." Okay? And, and that means he may literally object to this article the way it is written. And that's the most important thing. So if we, if we make a motion to approve this article, knowing that the town administrator has not signed off on the short-term borrowing necessary to pull this project off, then we may be back before town meeting with a different article. So I'm not saying we shouldn't act, but I think we should act transparently so that the town administrator knows we're prepared for the fact that we may have to modify the article.
So if, and, and I'm guessing that would be the purpose of the meeting that you were talking about?
Exactly, exactly. That was, with my discussions with the, with the town administrator, we went over different scenarios and.
You're going to be there? Okay. I wasn't offering.
You said the subcommittee, right? The budget subcommittee?
Right. Whoever's on the budget subcommittee, I think that would probably be a good representation. And, right, and a couple of FinCom members, a couple of select board members, town administrator, myself, probably Kristen and Eric, and just kind of figure out what's the best way to go forward.
With a transparent presentation at town meeting that everybody supports.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a deadline that we need to get the, the article in on town warrant? Is that why with the pushes for this on?
Right, so that's.
So we just need to get something on there and then we'll?
So Jeff, do you want to read the motion or?
Oh, I'd love to.
Thank you.
I move to see if the town of Wareham, the town, will vote to appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended in the direction of the school building committee for the roof replacement project at Wareham Middle School for Viking Drive, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town has applied for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA's Board of Directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project costs that the town incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. That should be emboldened.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Just to be clear, we're voting to submit this article for fall town meeting. Yes, okay.
Correct. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on our agenda is report of the superintendent.
Thank you. So approval of bills and payroll warrants, do we have the?
It's in your newsletter, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So in, in the superintendent's newsletter, the payroll warrants and bills and that have been signed, and we just need you folks to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, 5-0-0.
West Nile virus update, West Nile update. We have, I did get out information, and it was in the paper, that there was a mosquito that tested positive for West Nile in Wareham. So we took the precautions of having spraying done here at, at the high school and at the middle school. That spraying took place earlier this week. And there'll be some spraying done tomorrow morning around the elementary school. And we have also made some adjustments to our sports schedules, um, just to avoid that kind of feeding time for mosquitoes. So I think we're in a good spot and we'll make, you know, any further adjustments after the first frost, we'll be able to get back to being in that time, that time area.
April, question?
So if the spraying occurred earlier this week and then we had two consistent days of rain, what does that have as an effect on what, the areas that were sprayed? Or are areas being checked for standing waters or anything else that's being done?
Yeah, the Plymouth County mosquito control, they won't spray if it's, if it's raining significantly. And he's, he said, the director told me that the, the, the chemical that they use dissipates so quickly, it really doesn't matter if it rains the next day. But as soon as the sunlight, it just burns it right off. And so he, they're, they're confident that when they were spraying that it was, it was effective and the rain did not, did not affect that.
Thank you.
So the spraying doesn't, doesn't have any effect on changing sports schedules or anything? That, that has to wait for the first frost?
Um, yes, that's correct. That's correct. We're going to wait for the first frost.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the superintendent goals, and then we're hopeful that Mr. Gardner will be here so we can do our recognitions of those that are in the audience that we chose to recognize tonight.
All right. So in your packet, you should have received a copy of my draft goals. I did bring hard copies if anybody needs one. So the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee met earlier this week. And we went through a number of different goals that I had proposed and selected goals that we thought were appropriate. And they are the draft goals that have been shared with you. So on the document, you can see that we have, we put at the top our vision and core values and mission. And the first goal is our, is a student learning goal. This is, we decided a two-year goal would be the best way to roll this, this goal out. The main point of this goal is to identify areas of strengths and weaknesses in curriculum instruction in, in the Wareham Public Schools. Key actions will include getting perspectives of our stakeholders. I've already been meeting with many people, school committee members, staff members, select board members, FinCom members, other community members, and I'm going to continue doing that and just learning their perspective of the district, some of our strengths, some of our weaknesses and areas that they would like to see improvement. I'm also going to look at data, such as MCAS, attendance, graduation rates, school climate, things of that nature. And I'd like to really get an overview of what we, what, where we are, what we're doing, how effectively we're doing it, and use that information to roll into year two, where I would develop, along with, with administration, a, an action plan to address the weaknesses and try to build on the strengths of the school district. And you can see at the end of the goal, I, we have listed a number of focus indicators that accompany the goal. And I'll talk about that a little bit at the end. So that's a student learning goal. District improvement goal, we have three of them listed. The first one is to create a comprehensive emergency management plan where I would work with police and fire, along with the administrative team, to develop a, a plan for the district, for each of our schools, looking at a number of scenarios of emergencies that we might be confronted with and make sure that we have a plan outlined for our administrative team and the police, if the police are involved, to, to, to address the situation. We have, Wareham has done this in the past and has a number of pieces in place, but it is definitely in need of an update. The police and fire have already reached out to me and we have met with a, an emergency team from, that included a number of town officials from EMS. And they are really anxious to do this work also. So I think this is something that's ready to be done and people are, are enthusiastic about doing it. So I think it's an important goal and that would be my first district improvement goal. And then there's a focus indicator that, that aligns with that goal. District improvement goal number two is looking at our website. There's a number of folks who have recognized that there's a need to update the website for Wareham Public Schools, make it more user-friendly and interactive and something that families in the community will take advantage of. I know that the school committee has developed a subcommittee that is going to look at this piece. So I would work with that subcommittee, along with district administration, specifically our, our tech department, to look at our options and begin putting together a, a website that is a little bit more updated and user-friendly. And finally, no, not finally, district improvement goal number three is also a two-year goal. And this is looking at the retention of our students, specifically students who school choice to other districts. Reaching out to families of students who have made that decision to school choice with a survey to learn what informed their decision. And using that information to develop an action plan to address the concerns and challenges that families have, has the information they use to make that decision. So again, that would be a two-year goal. The first year, probably the first half year, three-quarter year is, is getting the information I would need, the families, the names of the families, the addresses, emails, getting the survey together, getting it sent out, getting responses, which is always a challenge when you administer a survey. And then using, I would share that data with you, organize it, share it with, with the school committee and the community. And then by the end of the year, develop a plan to, to address the, the concerns that we learned about. And finally is the professional practice goal. It's important to me to have, to be, to have a presence in, in all of the buildings. I think it's very important and I want to make sure that that is, is something that I'm doing on a regular basis to be visible throughout the district, visiting schools and classrooms, seeing teachers and students, hearing and seeing how things are going in our buildings. So I want to make that a regular routine, weekly part of my calendar to do that. And I would, I would document all of that, those times and dates and, and be able to share that with you. So that's an overview of what the, the goals are. And then we did look at focus indicators that align with the goals. They are attached at the end and I did send you the rubric. I'm happy to talk about each of the focus indicators. I don't know if, um, you've already had an opportunity to do that, but I will, I will let the, the committee decide how we want to go forward.
So any observations or questions from the committee?
So I would just, I just want to say thank you. It was Jeff and I who met with Matt this week to go over the goals and the focus indicators. So in this, under this goal, the focus indicators that Matt suggested were the first two. And I believe I added the words year one. And then I added the, the five underneath, just as a, as a, a place to start a conversation, just to bring it to the committee, you know, to see what everyone else thought. Matt, would you, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the fir-, you know, the first, the first goal is really getting that, collecting data. So, you know, data-informed decision-making, obviously that aligns with a commitment to high standards. Each of these, these focus indicators have, if you look at each of them, and I usually go to the proficient exemplary categories and look for the language they're looking for, or the specific actions they're looking for by the superintendent that, that align with that focus indicator. And many of them, you know, do, do align with what the actions are in the goal. But, you know, these additional ones, shared vision, that's something that we've done. Vision, mission, core values is something that, that I've already worked with the administrative team on developing. And then of course, curriculum instruction aligned with it, student engagement, student learning. So most of the, the focus indicators that we've listed align pretty well with each of the, of the goals.
Same as strategic plan.
And the strategic plan.
Same.
So are those too many focus indicators?
What's the total?
I, I don't, I don't think they are.
Okay.
It's, I think it's more challenging for, for you, because you have to, you have to evaluate me on it. But I, I look at these myself and try to make sure I am meeting what the expectations are in each of them. But for you to be able to gather evidence in each one of those would be challenging.
Well, I think some of them cross over, but again, they're not both years. So year one, there would just be the two.
That's right.
So year two. And so for year two, I mean, we could reconsider when it comes time for year two.
Right.
Instead of adding those, maybe all five of them, maybe we would, we would only add four of them.
Right, right. We can, we can revisit this as we, as we go through it.
Right.
Jeff?
So I have a fundamental problem, limiting the focus indicators as it pertains to the superintendent's evaluation, based upon the goals that the superintendent sets. And the fundamental problem can best be expressed as the goals are a separate and distinct aspect of the expectations that the school committee has for the superintendent. But there's a whole number of other expectations that we have as it pertains to the management of the district throughout the year. So we have cut in half the number of focus indicators that we're supposed to be concerned with as it pertains to the evaluation of the superintendent. And that's not acceptable to me, that we're cutting it in half just because those are the focus indicators that pertain to the goals. For example, managing conflict is one of the, is one of the focus indicators. Well, how well you manage conflict matters, and yet it's not included in the list. Fiscal matters is one of the focus indicators, not listed in, in the, in the list, because the actual goals don't pertain directly, certainly indirectly, but not directly, to the fiscal, to the fiscal health of the district. Well, the fiscal health of the district is incredibly important and the budget process over the next two years is going to be incredibly difficult. How well you manage that matters a great deal. So I, I cannot vote for these focus indicator, I support the goals, let me be very clear. And we discussed the goals in depth at the meeting on, on Monday. But the focus indicators came after that discussion, so this is literally the first time they've been discussed. And I just have a fundamental problem, limiting the focus indicators based on the goals.
I agree.
I agree.
And so I hear what you're saying. However, I have Dorothy Presser and Mask in my ear also, saying that this is potentially a best practice to go to focus indicators. We do it of our staff, we do it of our, of our building administrators, and we have the option, we don't have to do it obviously, but we have the option as the school committee to do it for our superintendent as well. And I just think it focuses us. Otherwise, we can get, I, I understand what you're saying, I do. But I would say maybe we build something in so that at the mid-cycle review, if there's an area that we think is an area of concern that's forming, maybe we add that as an indicator at that time going forward. But we're going to have to vote on this as a committee about the focus indicators, whether we accept some focus indicators or we do the whole rubric. So I'll let others speak on the matter as well. April?
I agree with Jeff. I think that there are other indicators that will be, you know, overlapping in so many areas, especially as he said, when it comes to, you know, management and comes to the, the financial responsibility, which does definitely, those are two of, not necessarily that the management of people doesn't fall into our purview, but it absolutely, the financial aspect and the budget definitely does. I don't like to feel like I'm limited with what my choices are, whether or not that might be something that I don't feel in that moment when I'm going through the evaluation. I might use other things from the rubric. I would rather have more options and not necessarily use them than be limited to having to pick one or two that I may or not feel comfortable using at that time.
Okay, Joyce?
So with all due respect to both of you, I totally understand what you're saying, but that contradicts setting out specific goals. Because what you're, I, what I hear, I think what you're saying, the way I hear it, is that you want the ability to evaluate on anything, even though we have chosen, you know, he's proposed these goals and we're looking at approving these goals and these indicators, certainly it's up for discussion, but the ones that we've, we're proposing are related to these goals. So it just, having every focus indicator available contradicts with having specific goals.
I'm not necessarily saying every focus indicator, because I'm aware there's what, 60-something focus indicators or a significant amount of them. I'm not saying all of them, but more than two would be.
Well, that's why, that's what he's asking now, though. So that's what we're saying. So when we met with him, he proposed these focus indicators. I proposed a few more for, just to start the discussion. That wasn't, this isn't a done deal, but that's what we're talking about now, that if there are other focus indicators that align with the goal, but just to, to say, I mean, that was the whole point, was to, to make the evaluation more concise.
Well, and I like that on that one that you have multiple, like say for goal one, there's essentially, there's seven focus indicators, but on others, like on goal one, district improvement, there's one. Do you know what I mean?
So that's why we're here today, to not to say we want every indicator available, but if there's other indicators that are appropriate, that we add them in. So I think that's why he included the rubric, so that at this point, we could be specific.
Well, I, the rubric came far later than the draft goals did, so I would like to have more time to like look at the goals and in conjunction with the rubric and decide what ones I think would be a comfortable addition to the focus indicators.
I was going to say, in terms of a timeline, would waiting till the next meeting on October 6 be an issue for you, Matt?
No, no. I mean, I'm, I'm going to start, I've already started with these, with these goals.
Right, the goals, I think we're, we all, the goals.
I'll make a motion to approve the goals, absence, absent any reference to the focus indicators.
To start with, yes.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor of accepting the goals as presented?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, saying, so the goals, we accept 5-0-0. So then the question right now is in terms of the rubric, and I'm hearing, you're saying, April, that you'd like a chance to look at them some more. And then we would have to make a decision though at our next meeting on October 6. Do we go forward with focus indicators, yes or no? If no, then that's, that's that. And if yes, what would those focus indicators be? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, but can I just say one more thing? So I have had the opportunity a couple of times, and I know other people have also, to summarize the evaluations. And I think it would be a much better process if we were all focusing on the same focus indicators. Otherwise, we have evaluations that are evaluating different things. So if we're not all on the same page with an evaluation, it.
I don't want to spend a whole lot of time, but let me ask you a simple question. You don't even need to answer it tonight.
Good.
But let's assume hypothetically that the superintendent did a great job on, on all his goals, okay? But the budget process was a disaster. Well, based on what I'm looking at, well, the budget is, the fiscal matters are not part of the focus indicators, so I just have to ignore that the budget process was a disaster.
But I would think that we could, if that is one, if you looked at the other missing goals, I know you're just using that as an example, but I think it's a very important one.
Yeah.
We could still add some more indicators here.
I, I don't think that's true, that you could, you would ignore. I, I think if there's something, a glaring, a glaring error or glaring piece that is missing, that you do have the ability to say, in this focus indicator, we need to see improvement. You, you, you can't, I, I don't think you can ignore it. I think you, you can address it.
Out of respect for the people that are in the room, we can have this conversation on October, whatever it was.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Is there anything? So on October 6, we will discuss focus indicators and decide one way or the other. Okay? Very good.
Well, can I just say, not just decide one way or the other, but come prepared, like if, if you do want them, which ones you want to discuss?
Right. So we'll all look at the superintendent's rubric and if there, look at the ones that we've highlighted here, see which ones, are there others that are missing? I know Jeff, you want the whole, I believe you want the whole.
I might find some, but that would almost denigrate the, the, the rubric itself to start deleting, but I will be open-minded.
Got it. So we'll all do our homework for the next meeting and come prepared. Very good. All right. Next up, we have some recognitions, which I am pleased to be able to do. It's good to have some good news. We're going to be standing over at this side of the building. I'd ask my committee members to join us over here, by Indiana's table.
So first of all, it's always great to be able to recognize student athletes and coaches in our district. We know how much work and time and effort goes into success in athletics and in being a great student as well. Two members I'd just like to recognize first, who are not here tonight because they are both freshmen at Salve Regina, received recognition for All Scholastic Selection Status for the Boston Globe for doubles in girls' tennis, and that's Olivia Powers and Mackenzie Brodley. So I'd like to just recognize them. Thank you. And now we'll go to the, continue the tennis part of our program here. So last year, informally, we recognized the tennis coach at Wareham High School, the girls' tennis coach, who was given the MIAA Girls' Tennis Coach of the Year recognition. That's a great honor. He's built a great program. He had some lean years, because I know my daughter was a captain in one of those many lean years, and he stuck with it and he kept building and building. And he's generous with his time, with his resources, and we really appreciate all that he has done to put Wareham on the girls' tennis map in, for the state and in New England for that matter. So I'd like to present Jeff Swett with his certificate from the school committee and this lovely sweatshirt. So this next name, I'm sure you've heard if you read any of the sports pages or follow the state tournament. Brooklyn Bendis. Brooklyn, why don't you come on up here? So Brooklyn had a great season. We are so grateful that she chose to come to Wareham High School. She is also a stellar student and she's receiving this award or this recognition from the school committee for being the 2022 Standard Times Girl Tennis Player of the Year in the Globe and Herald All Scholastic. She has never lost her set in all her competitions, which is absolutely amazing. She is the backbone of the girls' Wareham tennis team and we know she's going to have great success this year and in the future. So Brooklyn, congratulations, very proud of you. And Mr. Paladino, do we know of Mr. Gardner? Oh, there he is. I didn't see him. So unassuming. Come on up, Mr. Gardner. So Chris Gardner is an advocate for his student athletes and for the sport of track, whether it's winter track or spring track. He's done a great job building up programs over the years. I've seen his success firsthand with my, my own children, one of them anyway. And he is receiving our recognition and thanks for being named Coach of the Year from the Boston Globe and for the Massachusetts State Track Coaches Association. If that's not enough, he's instrumental. He was the key person in getting a new track for the town of Wareham and we thank him for that. He's done a great job. He doesn't always have the number of athletes that he wants, but the quality of athletes that he's able to get and strategically move around in meets is what's earned him these honors. And he's a great example of just a, a great teacher, solid citizen, and a good role model for all, Christopher Gardner. So, yes, could we have the recipients just stand up front? We're going to take a photograph here.
You have to go. Make him.
I'm on.
And Mr. Roderick?
Congratulations. Can I? Yes, Mr. Swett?
Aye. Before Brooklyn leaves. Before Brooklyn leaves, I, I want to, I want to say that, that recognition was overdue. I'm going to say thank you to the superintendent and perhaps the chair who put this on the agenda. Brooklyn was not just a star this, this past season, she has been a star since 2019. She was Player of the Year in 2019, 2021. We all know what happened in 2020. So she has three consecutive years of being Player of the Year through the Standard Times. And I believe she was also Herald and Globe last year, the year before as well. So she has been a, an extraordinary member of the tennis team and the student body for, ever since she arrived. So thank you, Brooklyn. And, and by the way, not to be left out, I have some wonderful parents on the, on the tennis team. It is not surprising to me at all that both of Brooklyn's parents are here to support her. They are incredible parents and supportive of this student. So thank you. Okay, now you can leave.
Thank you, Mr. Roderick.
Okay. Before we start, I just want to, if I can, you know, two of the hottest people you've ever seen in high school, you just recognized, and I think it's no coincidence that they're being recognized. I walked out of Dr. DeAndrea's office today and Brooklyn's practicing, and Chris has got kids running around the school all over the place. They are just, and Jeff, you as well, just very hard-working folks. And it's not a surprise that the, actually, the three of you, excuse me, were being recognized because it's just, as, as Mr. Pizzoli said, the effort and, and the work that goes into it, it's not a surprise. So I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention that, that just a great group. So thank you for recognizing those three folks.
Now, the spring was one of our better seasons in a long time. We had many great accomplishments. You just talked about a few of them already. We had a couple of, two undefeated teams in the conference, obviously a state runner-up team. We had Coaches of the Year, Athletes of the Year in different, different sports. It was amazing. And we had a winning record, which in the spring has been a long time since we've had a winning record. And it was, it was good. It was a lot of fun and we competed well. And, you know, we had 111 students and the other thing that always amazes me when I'm here is the GPA for those 111 students was 89.8, which is amazing. That is amazing to me, every, every time I say it. And it shows that the kids that play, that play sports are some of our better students and better kids in the school. So if you have any questions on anything on the report, please, please ask.
Any questions about the spring sports report? Okay, I think we're good with that.
That was easy.
Okay, now the next, we now move on to the SEC League affiliation update.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I need to say this. I don't want to embarrass Ed, but I will. The AD never gets enough credit in my mind. There's a glue involved in all of this happening. I don't know how he does it. He made tons, he made all of our playoff matches, no matter where they were. So I just wanted to say to Ed, thank you. It, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I like the job. I like the people I work with.
And I'd like to thank Ed as well and, and also like to thank his secretary, Sandy Barboza, that, just a great team and behind the scenes, putting everything together and making sure everything is dealt with in a very timely manner. And, you know, obviously the kids benefit, so thanks.
Thank you. You want to speak, bud?
So, well, we, yeah, it'll be short and sweet. We notified the conference today. We don't plan to be involved in the conference in 2023, 2024.
I made, I made some calls today. In October, I'm going to go to the Mayflower Conference meeting that they have every month. I'm going to talk about our interest in possibly joining the league. I've already talked to two athletic directors, the president this year and next year's president, which is from Westport High School, Jason Pacico, and from Old Colony, Matt Trahan. They both spoke favorably to me. That doesn't, you know, that mean that we'd, we'd get in, but I mean, I think they're, 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 they were pretty optimistic about it. We already played, I just figured out, I thought it was nine. We actually played, we're going to play 11 schools in that conference this year. 11. And over the years, I think there's only one in the whole conference that we haven't played. So it's not like we don't play them. And the games are very competitive. You know, we might, we've won probably more than we've lost, but the games are all three to two, four to one, not, not nine-nothing, 10-nothing, you know? And, and, and it's fun for the kids when you know that going into the game, you have a, a chance to win, not, not going, going, well, what are we going to lose by today? Seven, eight, nine goals, whatever it may be? So, you know, it's, it's been fun. And the South Coast Conference is great in many ways. I enjoy the athletic directors I work with and the schools, but it's, and overall, it's just really tough for our teams and it's been tough for our coaches. Sometimes I'm not even sure how they do it, get these kids to go to practice every day when you really don't have a chance to win games, you know? And they get them there. So now, you know, and proof of the pudding is, boys soccer has gone more or less independent and we're optimistic that they might have a winning season again. And that was never the case for many, many years. So we'll see. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying they're, they're going to get us in, but we're going to. I'm not saying they're going to get us in, but we're going to try hard. And another suggestion was going independent. I think that's not a good idea because for many reasons, one is we don't have any affiliation with officials, with this, with that, and it becomes difficult. The only problem we might have is boys basketball, and I've already discussed this with our coach. We might have to be left out of boys basketball. Boys basketball is way above this league in many ways and that's what will be the hard time for us getting them in. But, you know, like for an example, our boys basketball team, non-league this year, is playing many Division Ones. I mean, they're strong and they will be strong for many years. So that might be the only drawback. They wouldn't have a league champion in boys basketball, whatever it may be. Maybe they will take us, but I, you know, we may have to get in without them. That would be the only thing.
So can I assume, I guess, that the plan, which you came up with last year, playing all small schools in the SEC, didn't go favorably?
They basically said, you can already do that, why do you need another plan? And it is true, you can opt out for two years. But, you know, we have, we think two-thirds of our teams that are competitive in the South Coast Conference and a third that aren't. The problem is the third that aren't are really not competitive.
No. I mean, it's, you know, it's tough. I mean, it's, I don't know. We think this is the best decision. Scott and I have been talking about it and obviously our coaches think it's the best decision. I just hope that the Mayflower League will accept us, you know? And we've had good relationships with the schools we've played. And hopefully, that's why they continue to play us, because we've, you know, it's been competitive and it's been, it's been good. Hopefully, they will accept us. Now, when this will take place, I'm not sure. The bylaws for both leagues, if it's one year or two years.
A year ahead?
You know, at least a year ahead. So I'm hoping that if this goes through, that next year we would be in that league. But realistically, it could take, could take another year, you know, after that, because you just don't do that. You just can't.
But it's possible it could.
It's possible. Yeah, it is, it is.
So ultimately, you believe this is in the best interest of the majority of our students? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, but there's also, like, I don't believe they have, one of the tracks they don't have, I believe they don't have winter track.
So would the team have, that could winter track then go independently separate?
Well, I could still have winter track. They just have to be an independent schedule. They wouldn't be a conference champion or something like that. I wouldn't cut back on all the sports that we have. If they don't have it, they would at least have some type of schedule, let's put it that way. The only problem would be they wouldn't be able to compete for a league championship. And I believe winter track is one. I'm not sure if there's, I haven't looked at it that thoroughly. I'm not sure if there's anything else, but, you know, they have baseball, so although I was going through the sports, pretty confident that they, just about everything else they would have.
Anyone have any questions? Jeff?
So if you got a decision from them, when would that decision occur?
I don't know. They have an executive board meeting October 5th, which they wanted me to attend if I could, but I might not be able to because it's the exact same time as my South Coast Conference monthly meeting. So, but they have another one two weeks later. So I'm going to have a series of questions, stuff like that, and then we'll go from there. I just, you know, the conference, I don't know much about it, it's a, it's two types of schools for most of our, vocational schools dominate the conference. It's probably 10 of the schools, I believe, I'm not, don't hold me to it, but close to that. And six comprehensive, comprehensive schools we would mostly play, but we've played most of the vocational schools over the years, so.
That was my question. How many, so 16? There are 16?
16.
16.
And we've played so many of them.
It's a big conference.
I'm going to go, well, no, 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 there's divisions. They have three divisions.
Ah.
So the division that we would be in would be Holbrook, Avon, West Bridgewater, Bishop Connolly.
Westport.
Westport and us.
So that's smaller than we are now.
Yes.
So we'd still have to have some, in order to have a full schedule, we'd need some.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, yeah, that's not a problem. Well, I mean, that's what I've done with boys and girls soccer this year and football is totally non-league, so.
So for example, let's say there were six, okay? Or six. So that's a dozen home and away, right?
Ten.
Oh, it's five.
Well, because you don't play yourself, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so five. So would there be anything stopping us from going to the Bourns, the Fairheavens?
Oh, no, oh, no. Matter of fact.
Non-conference.
No, I'll just use boys basketball. I guarantee you, we still play Old Rochester, Bourne, things of that nature. And in girls tennis, you want to continue to play Old Rochester, I guarantee you, they would play us in a heartbeat.
Okay.
And I can't guarantee, I shouldn't say that.
Final question I have is, is there any truth that the MIA is planning to create a new varsity sport out of pickleball?
I don't know, but they might. It's so popular, it's amazing to me.
Yes. Thank you.
April?
So I just wanted to say that I think that I came up through the Mayflower League and a lot of the towns that the kids are now playing are teams that I played as a student athlete in the Mayflower League. I know that the, you're not thinking that the basketball team at this point, that they're at the same level that we're at. I know that at one point in the 90s, they were like really competitive for basketball. So I'm hoping that maybe the draw of our students wanting to play might make their students want to.
No, we would, if they take boys basketball, that's, we want that. I'm saying that they might not want us because of that. And if that's going to be the reason, then they would go independent. Okay? I mean, and honestly, it doesn't help our basketball team. Our basketball, what happens is, you probably don't realize, is there's now a rating system. So the leagues mean stuff, but not as much. Depends on who you play. So for an example, our boys basketball, we're playing several Division Ones so that we can get more points, right? Things like that nature. And teams that aren't as strong will play lesser opponents so we can just win some games. So it's fine with me. They might want us, actually, you know, with the ratings, they might want us in there because if they ever beat us, they're going to get more points. And even if they lose, if it's a fairly close game, they get points for that. So, and it's only, it would only be, it would be 10 games for us and we'd get 10 non-leagues. Hopefully, we'll take boys basketball if that's, if that goes through. But if they don't, our goal would be to, we'll have to go the other way.
Isn't, you're right. It's almost the opposite issue. They would get a lot of credit playing us, whereas us playing them wouldn't be worth much.
It would actually, it will hurt the boys basketball team, but it won't, not our other sports.
That means they should accept basketball.
Yeah, they might. I'm, you know, I was talking to them today, there, you know, there's a lot of scenarios out there and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves because I don't know what's going to happen at that meeting. But I'm hoping that they'll, we play so many of us it is and the games have been pretty competitive, I'm hoping that they can see that and that we would be a good addition to their league. Yes?
I just have one question, being a, you know, former Viking myself, is Bourne still going to be our Thanksgiving rivalry?
Oh, yeah, 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 that's okay, yeah. I'm not going to, there's certain things we would not change, certainly would not change that, certainly would not change that. And like I said, like, you know, I keep using boys basketball, that big rivalry with Old Rochester, we would, I don't think we'd ever stop doing that, you know what I mean, stuff like that, whatever. You know, it's, and girls tennis has developed now something with Old Rochester. So why would we not play them? You know what I mean? It's, I think, and at the meetings I've had with the SEC people, a lot of them would still play us in different sports, no question about it.
April and Joyce?
So one other question about, so I know that you said that as of right now, the Mayflower League doesn't have winter track. Is that because they haven't really, the town, like, they haven't really thought about having it or they don't have?
I think they don't have the facility. I don't think they have the facility.
They need an indoor track to have it.
Yeah, indoor track.
Well, I mean, we don't technically have.
But our conference does.
No, but our conference, you know.
Okay, so their conference doesn't have like access to Reggie Lewis or anything like?
There's not an indoor track in that conference.
I don't, I don't know exactly 100% why, but I think the major reason is the facilities, things of that nature.
Okay, because I was going to say, I think the only, the only two places that I recall that ours is, is either New Bedford Voke or Reggie Lewis, which is outside of our conference anyway.
On the Voke.
Yeah, we use, almost all I went to conference, conference meets are in New Bedford Voke.
Okay.
So they've been gracious enough to spread it out for us, for all the schools in the conference to use that, you know? We're lucky we have that. So I don't know the Mayflower League that good. I'm not sure if one of those schools has an indoor track, but that's probably the reason why they don't have it.
I don't think there's a school in the Mayflower League that has an indoor track.
They probably don't.
Okay.
So.
I was just curious. Thank you.
So basically, you're doing research now on potential acceptance to other league? Are you looking at any other leagues or just the Mayflower right now?
Well, I think that's the only one that makes sense. The other one closest to us is Cape and the Islands and I really don't want to go to Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard and things of that nature. I mean, on a regular basis.
Bring Martha's Vineyard to us, we don't go.
You know, I don't know if you were the coach when we went to Martha's Vineyard that time?
He was.
The game was at four in the afternoon. We left here at 10:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Hung around for two hours and then you're down like right away because you're like out of it. You're like out of it, you know, for a while and then it's, I don't know, I just, if we have to play.
We don't have the budget for that league.
Exactly.
Bottom line.
Joyce, you had a question?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I'm sure that this was not an easy decision for you guys to make. So, and I appreciate that and I am certain that you will put all these pieces together and make it the best that it can be for all of the students.
We hope so.
Thank you. Thank you for.
Again, I'm not a Wareham person, so to speak, and I try to keep that in mind, the tradition of Wareham sports. And I kept talking about it, we just, there's got to be a change for us to get to that spot where they were many, many years ago. They were power in most sports in the conference.
Well, I'm just saying, I know it's going to be work for you to make this all work and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not open house code tonight.
Awesome.
Great.
Great crowd. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up is report of the school committee. April, is there any policy subcommittee update?
If I was just going to, yeah, if. Just relatively, she's doing the office. So we don't have one yet. Yeah. No new updates.
Yeah, so no new updates. I believe we're still waiting on response for a high school parent.
Might have some.
And a middle school parent.
Have a middle school parent, a high school teacher.
Okay, so that's the only two left to fill?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so that's, thank you, Jamie.
Superintendent of Evaluation Subcommittee Update? I think we've probably heard, but go ahead.
Well, we pretty much covered that, but I did just want to say that I think that the next steps with that will be a timeline and then, would you agree with that? Just putting together like a year-long timeline?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last thing on our regular agenda is school committee protocol. It says vote, but we're not going to vote one way or another anyway because it's either going to be consensus or not consensus. So last we met, we agreed to nine of the 10 protocols and the question was on number five, which reads, channel requests for information through the superintendent or chair rather than directly to staff. So I'm going to look to you, April, to see what your thinking is tonight.
Well, I know that you and I have had a conversation prior to this meeting and I am still, it's, I'm just still having a really hard time with the wording of everything. And I know that part of it is, it's not a reflection of the current board, it's not a reflection of any current administration, so I don't want it to feel like I'm coming from a very negative place with this. I just have just a really hard time with the wording of this. And I do understand the motivation with the wording, with going to, you know, take time away from possible student learning or from people's tasks and I just, the way that it's worded still is just far too vague for me to be able to comfortably vote to accept them as worded. Or I'd accept it with number five just being eradicated altogether, but I just can't in good conscience accept, I don't know, there's, I just have, I just can't. I'm sorry.
So what I would propose going forward then is to list out the 10 and just have a sign or initial, each one that we agree with, which in effect is going to be nine out of 10, and then probably four out of the five for number five, I'm guessing. So I will put together a document that we would sign going forward at this point, unless anyone else has another comment or question or concern regarding this.
Nope, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I will get that out and we'll decide at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other business? I think we do have one item that we did not anticipate, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have a bus driver who got into a motorcycle accident on her private time. Unfortunately, she was badly hurt and has been unable to work. She has been with us for almost a year as a driver and is out of sick days. She cannot access the sick bank because you need to be a member of the union for five years to access the sick bank, according to the bus driver's contract. A number of drivers would like to donate days, sick days, to her to help her pay her bills while she recovers. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. There are 12 individuals who have volunteered days for a total of 48 days for her. So this is something that is, would be done, that's not contractual, it would need the school committee to vote to approve it. I have informed them that if the school committee does approve this, that they will not receive the days back if she doesn't use them all. If she doesn't use them all, the remaining days that she doesn't use will be put into the sick bank. They have agreed to that if you approve it. So I ask for your consideration.
Jeff?
So for my edification from anybody who knows, what, the five years, I had no, if someone had said to me that was something in the contract, I would have said it is. What is these, is it saying the teacher contract and other sick bank provisions, is five years the standard across the contracts?
I believe, I believe is, do you have to have professional status? So that would be, it would be roughly three years for the teacher contract to get professional teacher status. It would be three years.
Okay. So anything less than three years would be significantly different than the rest of the district's contracts. Okay. Okay, thank you.
April?
I just want to say, obviously, this is horrible for this person, but the fact that 12 of their colleagues are willing to put in their own personal time to help just really shows the strength in the community that Wareham employees and the teachers and bus drivers and everyone have for each other. And I think that that's something to really be commended, that they're willing to help out one of their fellow drivers and a driver that's been with the district for a fairly short amount of time. So I just don't want their generosity to go unnoticed and obviously wish this, this person well and heal healthily and quickly.
I agree.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm fortunate that I've gotten to know many of the drivers, at least casually, for a variety of reasons. The biggest reason is that I attend the in-services, which are required in order to maintain certification. My only concern about this is that we are, whether we like it or not, setting a precedent. And I'm not sure what that precedent is, how we would define the basis for doing this other than the obvious, which is out of compassion and out of recognition of what this says about the closeness of that team, which April has already referred to, and I agree with you, it's commendable that they're willing to do this. But if, I always go on the assumption that this is going to happen again. There will be some kind of event that within less than five years, that will be, that will be tragic. By the way, is the prognosis good for her return?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank goodness. But, so I would love to be, I would love for us to be able to define exactly what precedent we're setting so that the next time this happens, we don't suddenly feel uncomfortable that we don't want to do it again.
Right.
And I'm not, sitting here, I'm not sure how to define the precedent in a way that would be comfortable going forward. Do you have any thoughts?
I do. We could, we could write up a side letter of agreement that states that explicitly, that this does not set precedence. We will do this, this one time, and it doesn't set precedence.
That works with this group, maybe, but say it.
That, that works with this group, maybe, but say it, the, the other unions would have to agree too, though. So, for example, if we're a teacher in their first year, the same thing happened, we have in fact set precedent, even though they have a side letter that said we didn't, correct?
Right, right, yeah.
That's the only issue, I hear what you're saying, I'd rather err on the side of compassion here.
Right.
But, yeah, you're right, there is a risk.
See how we are not setting precedent.
Whether we like it or not.
Whether we have a side letter or not, to me, we're setting a precedent.
Well, this is clearly an exception, you know, it's not a, like an illness is sort of more of a predictable thing and I think, not like, obviously like a sudden illness or something, but I think like a tragic accident is, it's an, I would think it's more of an exception than a precedent.
Joyce and then Jeff.
I, I'm just thinking, if she were a member of the sick bank, how many days would she be allowed to request? Because there is a limit, if she were a member of the sick bank, she wouldn't be able, I don't believe, well, I don't know, so that's my question.
I, I don't know that offhand, I'm sorry, but yeah, usually there is a, a cap of, say, 30, 35 days.
Right.
That's, can be requested, I don't know what that is.
Could the days donated not be worded to not exceed the cap of sick bank requests? I know it says 48 days.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that way, at least it's not exceeding what other people have earned to supersede somebody else's thing.
I think you absolutely could do that, but to your question, Mr. Swett, the, the answer really is, the, the ideal situation is that she's able to access the sick bank. It's, it's, you have a process, you have a whole protocol for what, how that's done, how it's determined whether a person qualifies. I, you know, five years is, is a long time to, to have before you qualify for the sick bank. So, that, I think that's the answer, is, is to look at shortening that time.
The problem is, she doesn't even have a year, right?
That, yeah, right, she's about 10 months.
Right, so, we, even if we decided to shorten it for three year, to three years for the bus drivers, she still wouldn't qualify. I've served on the sick, the sick bank committee for many years. What I've always found interesting is that there are times when the member of the union votes against the person getting access to the sick bank, which, which tells me that there are some times when people are quite skeptical about having access to it. This is the flip side, which is literally you've got, is it more than half of the, of the drivers? So, it seems to me that maybe we, the precedent should be, and this would have to be a side letter with all of the unions that have sick banks, maybe the precedent should be, exceptions will be made, and I'm talking off the top of my head, so feel free to tell me it's a bad idea, but unlike the normal access to the sick bank, which involves school committee members and members of the union voting, very small number, what is, there's two members of, two members of the school committee and two or three members of the union, something like that. Maybe the exception would be that you can only have access to it before the designated time, five years, three years, whatever, when a, I don't know, two-thirds of your union votes to give you access.
Right.
And then we're saying, hey, if you've got such enormous capital with your union, they think you're just a tremendous asset to their organization and they're willing to give you sick time in order to, even though you're not normally entitled to it, then at that point, we can say, hey, you know, you've earned it and, and it's not an exception, it's not a precedent anymore, it's literally a side letter built in for all the unions that this is how someone could get access to it. I'm just planting a seed, I have no idea whether it's a good idea, but I'm trying to find a way to say yes, is the bottom line.
Kevin?
April?
I just want to say that the, the language of the five years, we just agreed, did that contract this spring and there was no mention from their side of changing the language to less than five years, that wasn't even something that I recall being presented as a, as an offer, counteroffer or anything, but I think there's been a lot of valid points made regarding it, that when instances like this come up, it really makes you rethink the structure of a contract. So, I agree with Jeff that in that, maybe like an addendum or like an aside to the, but I think it would have to be across all unions that have sick banks to make it equitable.
I'm sorry, Andrea.
As I'm sitting here listening, I'm thinking of just equity, right? Equity overall. So, because there's sentiment expressed with this person, right, then you have people willing to step up, but what if there isn't sentiment for someone else who's in the same situation, for example? And, and that one, so, to me, and, but the, so, it's inequitable in a sense, not to say that I'm not compassionate, I would want to give everything to everyone who is in trouble, but that, it's not really a popularity contest, right? It's, it's a, it's saying, what do we do under these particular circumstances that are an equitable distribution of this process? And I don't think five years is fair, I don't, I think if there's an emergency, we need to step up, but I also think that we should have language that's consistent across the board that allows that to happen.
So, if we said something potentially as a motion of like accepting the bus driver's sick bank time not to exceed the sick bank cap?
So, the, thank, thank you to Jamie, it's 15 days is the cap. Perhaps we could, I, I don't know how the committee might want to do this, but give her the days in blocks of 15. So, maybe we give her 15 and we just, we hold back the balance. If she goes through the 15 days, then another block of 15 until she's able to come back. And if, if the days are exhausted, then the days are exhausted.
So, the 15 isn't a cap, it's just 15 at a time?
15 at a time. That's correct.
Can I just read?
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
The minimum number of sick days that can be granted for a single disability shall be five days and the maximum numbers of days may not exceed 15 days unless the applicant driver has donated more than 15 days. In such cases, the maximum will be increased to the equal total number of days donated by the driver upon approval of the sick bank committee. These 48 days are being donated on her behalf.
There are, my understanding, there are over 1,000 days in the sick bank.
Would it be possible too, that once this driver, because I don't know how the sick time is accrued, if it's annually, do they accrue a certain amount or do they start off with a set amount and then, I'm just, to clarify, Jamie, if I could?
Each year, depending on their years of service, they receive certain amount of sick days based on their, where they're at in years of service.
So, would it be possible or prudent to, if we're doing this aside letter, to make it equitable to the unions about use of the sick bank, that the recipient of donated sick bank days, once they now start accruing sick days again, has to redistribute, like an additional, to kind of restock the sick bank, do you know what I mean? Like give a day or two in a certain incremental period to sort of kind of pay it forward, as it were? Like, I, I received this gift, I'm now going to give back to the sick bank X, Y, Z amount of days because I received them, so that it like kind of comes full circle?
Yeah, we'd have to figure out how to do that.
So, I must admit, thank you, Jamie, I'm, I'm uncomfortable going beyond 15.
How many times can you go to this?
For one disability at one time, for this, for an isolated disability.
Yeah, so the most would be 15.
The most you can get is 15?
Well, in this contract.
This one, very different.
The, every contract is different, but, yeah.
Wow.
So, would this person be, is this, is anyone aware of if the Massachusetts, the PFMLA has been utilized or is able to be utilized or because it's under a year, they don't qualify?
PFMLA has to be approved by the town, my understanding is, before somebody could access that, so I don't think she would have access to that.
I thought that the, the state changed so that it's, monies are coming, I don't know if maybe it's different on a municipal level where monies are coming out specifically line itemed for PMFMLA, because I know like in my paycheck, money is automatically taken out to add to that bank, so that if I needed to utilize it, I submit something online on the Mass Department of Revenue website and then that's supposed to be some sort of coverage for that.
I can answer that for you. We don't have PM, we don't have PMLA in the town area, we have FMLA, that's a family medical leave act that allows you to take up to 50 days for an isolated disability. And if you have your own sick time, you can use it during that time so that you don't go without pay, but you have to utilize your own sick time. If you don't have that sick time, it would be non-paid status unless, of course, you were eligible to ask your sick bank to provide the sick bank time to coincide with that at any moment.
We work for private employers and we have that coverage.
Okay.
As a town, they don't. And I only know that because I've asked the attorney that so many times, he's so sick of me asking.
Go ahead, Jeff?
So, my motion for, to continue the discussion maybe, would be that we ask the superintendent to negotiate a side letter of agreement with all of the unions that have sick bank provisions in their contract that would allow access prior to, for up to 15 days or whatever the maximum is in the contract, access for up to 15 days or whatever the maximum is, for any employee who has less than the required seniority with, with the Wareham Public Schools, with the vote of the school committee and a two-thirds secret vote of their union.
Any discussion?
I'd love to hear what administration, how administration feels about this motion. Are you comfortable with it?
I think, I think it's a good idea that's worth exploring, I think we'd have to run it by our attorney to see exactly what the language would look like. I, I also would like to see the, the other contracts that have sick banks, what they, the minimum number of years that they have.
Is there any timing problem with this? For example, could this be, could I withdraw the motion and April withdraw the second while you do some more investigation and would that hurt the employee?
Well, this would take time, to, to do this side letter is going to take time.
Right.
Right.
Could we, could we make a motion to agree for the 15 days with side, knowing that there's a side letter in progress?
The understanding that a.
So that there'd be three weeks of, I don't know, that's.
So, so, right, so, you're concerned about when this happens again?
Absolutely.
Right. And so, perhaps approve the 15 days and then, at the same time, I work on this type of side letter that you've suggested.
I mean, the union, the other unions may not agree to it.
Right.
And she may not get two-thirds, who knows? I mean, I'm, but at least we've acted in good faith, trying to deal with the tragic accident that this represents. You know, if the employee knows that we're acting in good faith and trying to get her 15 days, you know, I'm, I'm not sure of the timing we should worry about it, I think we should do it right. And, and so, maybe we should just give some, give some time to do it right.
When is her sick time up?
It's, she's, she's out.
She's out now?
So, I rescind my second, under the, if we make a new motion to approve the 15 days with the caveat as it is a current exception and that the school committee, the superintendent and the unions will work together for unity and inclusion in language regarding any future sick bank shortcomings with the vote of the school committee and a majority of the current union per union.
Mr. Chair? I find it, you know, I don't want to second-guess Greg, but I can't imagine that an attorney's going to have a problem with this. We're negotiating in good faith a side letter, which the union can either reject or, and I suspect they'll, they won't have any problem making a decision because it's, it's a generous thing that we're doing out of compassion and for them to reject it, it seems highly unlikely. And the two-thirds is simply saying, we want to make sure there's a clear majority, more than a majority of people who really feel strongly about doing this. And by the way, those 48 days would no longer have to be, she'd simply have access to 15 of the 1,000 days. So, we could, wouldn't even have to worry about the 48 days under, under this plan. So, the more I think about it, unless you see, forget legal, unless you see a fundamental operational flaw in the idea, maybe, maybe we should just proceed.
My only question would be on the two-thirds, why couldn't we just keep the same process that we have for approving sick days with the committees?
The reason, because I want to, because it's an exceptional situation, I want the threshold for approval to be that much higher.
But we would still have the ability to say no if we wanted to as part of that sick bank committee, correct? Isn't it two and two?
Well, actually, no, it's, it would be the vote of the school committee and the vote of the union, two-thirds vote yes, you're, the school committee could vote it down and the, or, and/or the union could vote it down, it would not be part of the sick bank committee, it would be an exceptional process.
So, am I understanding you right, Jeff? You want to grant her 15 days from the sick bank? Because that's not what's being requested.
I know, I know.
And there's a process for the sick bank and this isn't it.
I understand that. I'm saying, if this, this body and two-thirds of the union vote to do it, then, then this person can have access prior to five years, in this case, of up to, of up to 15 days.
But aren't you voting, aren't you, aren't you saying, we're allowing members to give in, in unique or emergent situations where we're allowing members to donate sick time to people who don't qualify for the sick bank?
Well, this, this is different, so this is from the sick bank, this is not from people donating their days, this is what Jeff.
They're donating their days.
That they're looking to donate.
That's not what Jeff is proposing.
Yeah, these are their own days.
Those are their own days. But that's not what Jeff just proposed.
No, I know, and that's why I'm just trying to be, it's separate from the sick bank.
I'm saying, let's, let's keep this simple, you know? They simply get access ahead of time based on the full vote of this committee and a full two-thirds vote of their union.
In emergent or extreme situations.
Yes, yes.
That seems riskier to me.
How is it risky?
Than, than accepting, go ahead.
If I may, so, I, I, in, in my previous district, this came up a few times and the school committee voted and approved. It, it, I, I ju, I mean, I'm not saying it's going to create a, it never created a problem. People said, you know, that's a good thing to do, it didn't reoccur often, maybe three or four times. I consulted with Doreen about this, this is something that the town has done with its unions, where they've allowed days to be donated. So, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I think that we do need to look at what happens when someone needs additional days, but they're under that threshold. when someone needs additional days, but they're under that threshold where they have to be over to, to access the sick bank. But this is not something that, that would be out of, out of, completely out of the ordinary if, if you were to vote to approve this.
April?
So I misunderstood what you were asking initially and I'm not sure if anyone else did either. I thought you were ask, they were donating sick bank days and not their current sick days?
No, they're donating their own days that they have.
Okay, so that's, that was my misunderstanding. And then I think when we kind of got into the sick bank conversation, I think that didn't help and it merged all of that in my head. So, okay, so it's their own personal days.
Correct.
They're looking to donate to one particular person. There are 12 people willing to donate a certain number of days to this one person.
Correct. Some of the, some of the people who are willing to donate days are donating one day, others are donating 10 days, some two days, some five days. They just decided how many days they would like to donate. That's why I think it's important to say, you're not going to get these days back because if she used, you know, a certain number, we, we wouldn't be able to determine who gets theirs back. So, and they said, they, they said they understand that and then we would just put the rest in the sick bank.
Jeff? I, I have learned over the decades to assume the worst, you know? Things are going to happen again. And I'm trying to imagine a situation, not trying to imagine, I am certain a situation will come up where it won't be as favorable, you know? And you'll want to vote against it, okay? And you'll feel compelled to vote for it because you've already set the precedent. And what are you supposed to say? You're, you're supposed to say, well, this was a really nice person and I really liked this person and she's a dedicated employee and this person's a jerk. I'm not into that, you know? That's not, that's not the way I want to conduct business at the school committee. And so I, I think we are setting a precedent and the only way I'm willing to vote for this is if we actually prepare ourselves for the next time that this happens.
Can I ask just one more? Oh, sorry, Brandon.
If I'm understanding what he said correctly, we aren't setting a precedence, we're following a precedent. He said that, you know-
Now, that was at Martha's Vineyard.
Okay, that, well, no, you said that you had talked and it's happened in this town before?
It's happened in the-
Oh, you mean, oh, it hasn't happened in the school district?
No, not, not that I'm aware of.
It's happened in this town.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Sorry.
And if I was on the Board of Selectmen, I would have voted against it then. Joyce?
When you say there's 12, so how many total members of the union are there? Is that a majority? Is that?
Uh, no, I think that it's not a majority.
No. Okay.
Yeah, it's probably not, no. Depending on how they're, they counted. Because not everybody who works there is in the union.
I feel like this is a situation of we're damned if we do and we damned if we don't. And it's unfortunate that it's at the, you know, for the reasons that we're having to discuss it is that somebody was gravely injured.
Yeah.
I think if there's language that allows people to donate their sick time in the contract across the board, if there's an emergency somewhere, then I think we're fine. No?
I don't think that language exists, does it?
No, it doesn't. That's my point. That's the problem.
Yes.
So if we create, in other words-
That's what I'm trying to do, create language.
I know. And so I'm agreeing, let's keep it, just if someone is in an emergent situation and other members are willing to donate their sick time, right? Please inform the superintendent and the school committee votes. And that's, and then it's even and fair across the board for those very specific situations.
And then it's the people that are offering to donate instead of an expectation of access to the sick bank.
Correct.
I'm trying to imagine a side letter that said that.
It's really unfortunate that this has to be so complicated.
I agree. That's why I tried to simplify it, but I apparently didn't.
So is there a motion?
I haven't withdrawn mine.
Could you repeat it again?
Right, we don't, we don't.
So at some point, maybe if it's the language similar with this aside that Dr. Schwam just said about people in extreme circumstances, if people, members of certain unions are willing to donate time to a person who has yet to meet the threshold to have their own time or has exceeded their own time, then it will get, it can get presented to the superintendent to then get presented to the school committee for a vote. Aside from that, like look into language like Jeff suggested of earlier access overall and see if maybe that somewhat language that may have been overlooked in contract negotiations because their focus had been on other aspects of the negotiation, which is most likely the case. So I think by bringing it up and even making it as like a union addendum or an aside letter going forward in regard to the sick bank as a separate issue. Because clearly Jeff is, I get what you're saying, anticipating the likelihood of something happening again, regardless of what it is, of another emergent situation in a different union where people may or may not want to donate but may have like a year away from their sick bank or something like that. So I think it's two separate items because these are people that are offering their own time, they're aware of it, they weren't asked, they said, yes, give this person, I want to give this person my time. And that's like, we accept gifts that the superintendent reads to us all the time. It's basically like a gift to this employee. And we accept gifts for individual classrooms. Like we had a gift in, there was four gifts that were in our, the superintendent newsletter that were to certain classrooms, but not every classroom got those gifts. So it's how, if you look at it that way, it's not really that different. Not every classroom got those gifts. They were donated by individuals that wanted to give them to that particular classroom. So that's not equitable either. So if this is a gift from another union member to another union member, I feel like we should be able to accept that gift on that person's behalf. And then going forward, now that we're aware of this being a possibility, work together on language to bring to the unions to unify maybe the whole sick bank, sick day policy across the board.
Yeah, because if I understand this correctly, I mean, no one here doesn't want to give this, you know, we don't want to reject this gift, but we're just worried about our setting a precedence that will come back to, you know, bite us in the behind later down the line. So can we make some kind of motion where we accept this gift right now on a partial basis and, but like you said, with the understanding we're going to create language for future situations?
Jeff? So there's one way I'd be willing to vote for, and I thank April for bifurcating the, the issue. I would be willing to vote for the, for the request if, if, if we also voted to investigate with the unions a mechanism by which there could be early access in extraordinary situations to the sick bank. And I would expect you to develop that process, come back to us for approval. And so it would not be, it would not be a precedent because we're saying, we're going to do it one time, but after that, the, the side letters that we're going to negotiate with the union would, would remove that precedent. And, and they, and those side letters would take precedents after this non-precedent-setting action. Does that make sense?
I would second that.
Does that make sense?
It did. I don't know how you're writing that down right now in the minutes.
Well, that's why she's the boss.
Jamie looks like her eyes are crossing over there.
Awesome. In other words, we're not going to set a precedent only because the very next thing we're going to do is develop it so that the next time it happens, we actually have, we actually have a mechanism for dealing with it rather than another precedent-setting, another action that looks back at the last precedent. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the most use of the word precedent in such a long time.
So, was that a motion?
No.
So do you want to try to craft that into a motion?
Well, I, I am gonna, my motion will limit it to 15 days because I think that would be too much of a precedent. So-
Too much of a precedent to unprecedented?
Yeah, exactly.
Could we save 15, I'm trying to think when our next meeting is because could we save
How do we give someone with less than five years more access to, to, to sick time?
Because it's a gift. It's an acceptance of gifts.
All right. You, you, you tell, what's your motion?
So my motion would be to accept the proposal from the superintendent on the receiving of gifts from fellow union members to a member without sick time for the time being while the superintendent and the school committee work on language and procedure moving forward should this ever arise again.
I hate to make this more complicated, but are we going to be, are we going to be forced to accept any time that this comes up if it's presented as a gift? Are we then obligated to accept it?
No, because we're going to write language specifically after this. Right now it's a gift, but going forward it will be-
It will not be.
A procedure. It will be a policy. It will be an addendum to a contract.
Okay, then.
So, so everybody's comfortable with 48 days, even though someone has been around for 15 days, after this, we, we actually put this in writing, is going to be limited to 15? Or is the, or is the side letter going to say they can have as many days as the, as the union donates to them? Is that what, is that what the side letter is going to say?
That's going to be up to the-
Well, if they're donating their, if they're willing to donate their, that much of their own time.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, that would be like someone's trying to donate $500 to us, but like, we'll only take 100. And that's it. We don't need the other 500. But like I said, I think if, if we work into that future language, that once that person is eligible, that they then have to pay that forward or put into the sick bank or have some sort of language where it's not just a gimme, 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 and no good, give, give, I think it would make it a little bit more balanced.
I guarantee you there are people who would have liked to have had more than 15 days and didn't get it.
But again, were those people gifted 48 days by their fellow mem-
That process didn't exist.
Well, it does now and I think that, you know, yeah. I say that we just accept the gift as is and if their, you know, group, union, whatever, if they decide that they want to gift that much.
But I think, I do think there needs to be a cap though somewhere. I don't know what that cap is at the moment, but I think there needs to be a cap.
That's something I think that we should create down the line with this side language and everything, not right now. Right now, I say we just accept the gift as it was presented and moving forward, we'll deal with it, kick the can down the road.
Or accept the gift not to exceed a certain number.
Should I?
So the 12, what did I say, 12 people?
Yeah.
So if we took a day, one day from each of them, so that's 12 days, that would be easy because then everybody gives one day. If it's 15, then I have to figure where the other three days, who's, so if we granted the 12 days as a one-time, non-precedent-setting gift. And then, then we start working on some sort of mechanism for individuals who don't meet the threshold to access the sick bank, how they could access extra sick days if possible. And then we just go forward.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, so all those in favor of accepting the 12 sick days with us, working on a side letter going forward, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed?
Sorry, I'm really sorry, but I have to say no just because there's no set process in place and I can think of past situations. I, yeah, I'm sorry, I have to say no.
I, I understand, but 4-1.
I really sadly have to say no.
I'm surprised that this has not come up.
4-1, it passes.
Not in 14 years, anyway.
Well, as we've learned in the last two years, it's a first time for everything.
Joyce, I wish you'd spoken up about your concerns earlier.
It's, it's nothing that anybody can change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other business? Okay. I remind us, our next meeting's October 6th. On October 20th, we have an executive session at 5:30 to discuss a personnel issue, a Level III grievance. October 20th at 5:30. Our next meeting on October 6th at 6:30. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. 5-0-0. Thank you, meeting is adjourned.